Brenna directs our string program from grades four right up to these most accomplished musicians. These are all musicians who auditioned to be part of the Chamber Strings. Last May, they received a gold rating at the MICCA Solo and Ensemble Festival. Our highly dedicated group of strings players rehearsed twice a week before school, and that's a great sign of dedication. We appreciate you being here to play for us tonight. Thank you very, very much. And thank you all for being here. I'm informed that we have enough folks for a quorum and that we're prepared to start the meeting. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Scott McDermott, and I am your town moderator. Once again, honored to be here for the annual town meeting at the Medfield High School gym. Since 1651, you know my statement, 363 years now, Medfielders have gathered right here on these lands to continue to do the great job of self-governance, and we're happy to have you here. Tonight, we have 45 articles. That's a record in the 12 years that I've been doing that to consider. So, key words will be expedience, dispatch, those kinds of words I'll be using frequently, and I hope everybody who participates in the meeting will be mindful of that. We'd like to get that done, get our meeting done in one evening if we can. So, again, I would now ask our town clerk to read the return of service of the warrant.
By virtue of this warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Medfield qualified to vote in elections and at town meetings by posting attested copies of the same at five public places seven days before the date of elections as within directed. Constable Lars Anderson dated April 16, 2014.
I'm now honored to invite Jeff Marsden, who is our new superintendent of schools, at least since our annual town meeting, to join me on the podium. He's going to introduce himself and to lead us in our pledge of allegiance in a moment. Jeff has been a teacher and an assistant principal and a principal and a superintendent for eight years before coming to Medfield. He has a doctorate in educational leadership from the Lynch School at Boston College, where he's also been an adjunct professor, and we're very, very happy to welcome him to Medfield. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's hard to believe this is already my third town meeting in Medfield, but my first annual town meeting. So, I wanted to take my time to introduce myself to all of you. We've had an outstanding school year so far this year. Our kids continue to do well and achieve at high levels. The budget process was very positive. I want to thank the school committee, the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator Mike Sullivan, and of course, the Warrant Committee for all their support. I think we've developed a prudent budget, one that satisfies the needs of both the school district and the town, and I hope you'll support that budget this evening. Thank you again, Mr. Moderator, for this opportunity, and thanks all of you for such a warm welcome to your wonderful community. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. Welcome. Have Kelly McManus here, who is a senior at Medfield High School and has treated us before by singing at our town events, and she's going to lead us in the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Give proof through the night that our flag was still there? O' say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the brave and the home of the brave?
Great. Great job. Thank you. Thank you so much. And good luck. One moment of, in memory and appreciation of folks who have contributed to the town of Medfield, we recognize them each year at the annual meeting. At the special town meeting, we paused for Bill Reagan, Ed Doherty, and Andy Thompson. I'd also like to recognize tonight Ruth Nader, who was a member of the Council on Aging Board, Warren Shard, who was a member of the Park and Recreation Commission, Dan Brazel, who was the former library director, John Horgan, who worked for the Department of Public Works from the school department, George Callahan, Joseph McHugh, Dorothy Avery, and Mary Lacuadeau. So, please pause. And for all other friends and neighbors who passed away in the month since our last annual town meeting, we pause. Okay, and I thank you all. We now move on to the introductions. Now, you may be seated. Thank you. First, I have the honor of introducing our town clerk, Carol Mayer. To my immediate right and consistent with our tradition, I would now ask the chairman of the Board of Selectmen to introduce the executive branch of our town government.
Next to Carol Mayer is Evelyn Clark, the administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen, Assistant Town Administrator Christine Trewiler, Town Administrator Mike Sullivan, to my right, Richard DeSorga, Selectman, Selectman Mark Fisher, and Town Council Mark Sorrell.
And I would ask our chairman of the Warrant Committee, Gus Murby, to introduce the members of the Warrant Committee.
Thank you, Scott. To my left first is Barbara Gips, Mike Markucci, Greg Sullivan, Joanna Hilbert, Jim O'Shaughnessy, Nick Athanasios, Tom Marie, and Martha Festa.
At this time, I will make a motion to permit non-voting participants to sit within the town meeting and to speak to the community as requested. We reserve a special visitors section of the meeting for this purpose. I would ask that Evelyn Clark, Administrative Secretary to the Board of Selectmen, to read the names.
Jeffrey Marsden, Superintendent of Schools. Kenneth Feeney, Superintendent of Public Works. Christine Trewiler, Assistant Town Administrator. Mark Sorrell, Town Council. Joy Richudo, Town Accountant. Sarah Reposa, Town Planner. John Naugh, Building Commissioner. James Snyder, Park and Recreation Director. Deborah Kelsey, Library Director. Don Walter from Door &amp; Whittier, Architects for the Public Safety Building. Shane Nolan from Datalis, Project Manager, Public Safety Building. Michael Berry, Consultant to the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, guest of Medfield Energy Committee. Paul Mullett, Environmental Partners, guest of Water and Sewer Board. Amanda Bonardo, Representative Garlic's Assistant.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, and thank you for all you do for Medfield. I move that those folks identified who are sitting in the non-voting section and the student section be permitted to sit within the town meeting and to speak to the community as requested. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. At this time, I also make our standard motion to permit more than one speaker per article and to allow for the extension of time for the discussion at the moderator's discretion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Our meeting guidelines are set forth on pages one through four of the report of the warrant. I hope you have a copy of the report of the warrant because we will be referring to it a number of times during the course of the meeting. I do want to just reference one error that is on the page, the bottom of page three. If you look to the bottom of page three, it speaks to the question of what happens if we are pressed by time in an annual town meeting. It describes the process I need to go to to provide notice to the town, and it also provides some reference to our deadline. But one thing it does say is that if the town meeting is adjourned in 2013, that should have been updated, if the town meeting is adjourned in 2014, it would be adjourned until tomorrow night, so April 29th. So, that would be the adjournment date, and all the rest of the guidelines hold true. The way that we're going to work tonight in order to be able to move as quickly through the articles as possible is that first, we're going to consider, as we always do, the consent calendar, and then there's three articles, Articles 11, 13, and 14, that are veterans' exemptions, and then Articles 15 and 16, which are personnel matters. And then we have a whole sequence of matters that relate to zoning, excuse me, that relate to the bylaws of the town, either general bylaws or zoning, and we're going to take them up in sequence, beginning with Article 31, 32, 33, back to 30, 34, 35, 36, and 43, so that we can move right through all the articles that pertain to the bylaws of the town, whether general or zoning, in sequence. And then at that point, we will go to our usual system of the lottery. Our report on the warrant of the annual town meeting is an important document. Beyond the guidelines that I reference, there is a statement by the chairman of the Warrant Committee, Gus Murphy, on page seven, and there is a review of town finances offered by the Board of Selectmen on page 10. Additionally, there is a summary of all the revenue, expenditures, appropriations, and debt service of the town on pages 16 to 20, and for those that are keeping score, we have the index on page 76. So, that's the report of the town warrant. I do want to reference our annual town report, which was available on the hallway on your way in. Particularly, I want to reference the fact that this annual report this year is dedicated to Ann Thompson, who is here tonight. So, thank you, Ann, again, for all that you do. I would now ask for some remarks by Gus Murby.
Almost 20 years ago, when my family and I first moved to Medfield, the town was in the middle of a major capital improvement phase. The library and the townhouse projects were well underway. Within a few years of our arrival, Medfield undertook a major school construction project that brought us the high school and reconfigured middle school. As we look ahead to FY '15, the town is once again in the middle of a major capital improvement phase. Last year, the construction of the new DPW garage was approved. At this year's town meeting, you're going to be asked to approve the construction of a new water tower on the state hospital grounds, probably the number-one priority for capital investment in the town. And next year, it is likely that you're going to be asked to approve the construction of a new public safety building to house the police and fire departments. It's sobering to realize that the decisions we make on these projects will have a significant impact on the town for the next 20, 30, 40, or even 50 years. I suspect that most, if not all, of us can look back on the decisions the town made 20 years ago and take pride in the financially tempered but strategically broad-minded decisions the taxpayers back then made as they charted the course for developing our townhouse, library, and schools. I hope that 20 years from now, the residents of Medfield will look back on the decisions we are making over these several years and find that we are also tempered but strategic. The attractive interest rate environment we have experienced over the past several years has helped ease the impact of these capital projects on our tax rates. We are likely to continue to experience this benign environment for at least a few more years. This is a really good time to be financing major capital projects like the ones we are undertaking. Working against this positive factor, though, is the nature and pace of the economic recovery. While many Medfield residents have begun to benefit from the economic upswing that is taking hold, the Warrant Committee recognizes that many have not. Even as we find ourselves encouraging taxpayers to accept higher taxes to finance the town's capital projects, we have provided the most austere budget guidance to the town and school departments that has been issued in years. We have pushed back on specific funding amounts requested in other warrant articles beyond the articles dealing directly with the operating budgets and capital budget, not because we think they're bad ideas, but because we don't think the town can afford them right now, given other financial demands the town and taxpayers are facing. As you consider the funding requests for FY '15 included in this year's town meeting, I ask you to begin thinking about the best options for financing possible opportunities that will be presented to the town through the purchase of the state hospital property. Assuming the town is successful in purchasing this property from the state, we will be taking on responsibility for successfully completing a complex real estate development project. There are two pieces of this property that the town may want to invest in for its own purposes: the chapel on the main hospital campus and the buildable acres on the land south of Hospital Road near the athletic fields. These two pieces of property represent windfall opportunities to develop something of great value to the town on what may be the most attractive, developable piece of real estate in Medfield. Deciding what to do with these properties is going to take imagination, foresight, and broad-mindedness. Fully capitalizing on the potential of these properties is quite likely going to take funding beyond what can reasonably be provided just through our property taxes. Right now is a good time to begin thinking about what you would like to see the town do with these properties, as well as to explore possible ideas for how the town might raise funds to ensure that these properties are put to their full and best use without necessarily being constrained by what the town can reasonably support through the annual budget. Medfield is at an exciting point in its history. Some of the challenges we face are difficult and complex, but we are also at a juncture with significant upside potential. We need imagination, boldness, and discipline to realize that upside potential, and we need to begin thinking about how to capitalize on the opportunities now. The Warrant Committee would like to thank the town departments, the school department, and the town administration, officials, and committees for the careful thought they have put into constructing budgets and plans for FY '15, as well as for their flexibility and willingness in working with the Warrant Committee to adjust those budgets and plans to arrive at what you are being asked to consider at this year's town meeting. There are many people here in town working tirelessly to make Medfield a great place to live. We would also like to thank you, the taxpayers, for the open-minded, objective manner you have always shown when considering the warrant articles introduced at town meetings. In the final analysis, we have high confidence that you will make the right decisions. Thanks for your interest in and careful consideration of the issues we face today. That will be a big factor in guiding the destiny of Medfield for years to come.
Thank you, Gus. I'll call on Mike Sullivan to see if he offers some remarks.
Sure. In the interest of expediency, I'll be very brief so we can move on and get through the warrant, hopefully, tonight. I'd refer you to page 10 of the warrant report for the review of town finances. I think that gives a good summary of what you're going to be dealing with tonight. I think if you read through that, you don't have to listen to my five-minute speech on what we'll be doing. If you do that and follow the results and recommendations of the Warrant Committee, you will, for the third year in a row, not be subject to an operating override. In addition, what you have before you tonight does not contemplate any debt exclusion overrides on this warrant. It will result in a tax increase. At this point, there's still, things are still somewhat in flux, but I'm estimating we'd have a tax rate increase of between 3.5, 4%. A bit more than we've had in the last two years. Last year, there was a zero tax increase. The current year we're in was a 2.5% increase. So, you would be seeing a slightly higher tax rate increase. But I, again, think that the Warrant Committee and the Selectmen and all the town boards and committees have done an excellent job representing you and trying to keep the budgets down. So, let's get to work. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Michael. We'll get to work with the consent calendar, the 2014 consent calendar. There's a reference on page 21 and 22 of the report on the warrant that describes why certain articles might appear there as a matter of expediency or legislative convenience. So, I will now identify the articles that are placed on the 2014 consent calendar, and as I read the brief synopsis of each article, if you would like further discussion on that particular article, please signify by saying hold. If an article is held, the subject article will be placed back into our traditional lottery system. Articles for passage on the consent calendar. Article two, to accept the report of town officers, on page 23. Article three, to accept the perpetual trust funds for the care of the Vine Lake Cemetery, on page 23. Article four, to reauthorize the fire alarm revolving fund, on page 24. Article five, to reauthorize the ambulance revolving fund, on page 24. Article six, to reauthorize the advanced life support revolving fund, on page 25. Article seven, to reauthorize the community gardens revolving fund, on page 25. Article eight, to reauthorize the rental income revolving fund, on page 25. Article nine, to reauthorize the library revolving funds, on page 26. Article 10, to reauthorize the respite care revolving funds, on page 26. Article 12, to accept the provisions of Section 4 of Chapter 73 of the Acts of 1986 regarding certain tax exemptions, on page 27. Articles on the consent calendar for dismissal. Article number 27, to see if the town will transfer a care, custody, and control of Lot 3, a parcel of town-owned land off Ice House Road, to the Park and Rec Commission. And also for dismissal, Article 39, to accept a grant of access from Wild Holly Lane to Homequist Conservation Land. Hearing no holds, I will now offer a motion that Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 12 be passed as printed in the warrant and that Articles 27 and 39 be dismissed. Do I have a second? Seconded. So moved. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? I declare that the motion carries unanimously. We now move to Article 11. Article 11 is a vote to reduce the residency requirements for qualified veterans from five years to one year as provided in the last paragraph of Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22. You can find it on page 27 of the report, and I would ask Warrant Committee member Barbara Gips if you have a motion.
We do. Article 11, move that, this is my first year, move that the town accept the provisions of the final paragraph of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, 22nd. We recommend passage of this article.
We have a motion on the floor, Article 11. Any questions, comments? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I deem that the article passes. Article 13. Article 13 is an article to accept Mass General Law, Chapter 60A, Section 1, Paragraph 8, exempting motor vehicle excise tax vehicles owned by a military personnel member stationed outside the United States. The article is found on page 27 of the report, and I would again, it's sponsored by the Board of Assessors and the Veteran Services Office, and I would again ask Barbara Gips to read the motion.
Article 13, move that the town accept General Law, Chapter 60A, Section 1, Paragraph 8, and the Warrant Committee recommends passage of the article.
Are there any questions or comments? If there are none, we will put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I declare it passes unanimously. Article 14. Article 14 is an article to accept Mass General Laws, Chapter 60A, Section 9, to permit deferral of motor vehicle excise tax for a member of the Mass National Guard or reservist or dependent or a member of the Mass National Guard or reservists for up to 180 days after completion of that service. Do we have a motion?
We do. Article 14, move that the town accept the General Law, Chapter 60A, Section 9, and the Warrant Committee recommends approval of this. Passage.
Are there any questions or comments on Article 14? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare that it carries unanimously. Okay, we now move on to the personnel issues. These are Articles 15 and 16. These are traditional articles that we see each year. Article 15 is an article that fixes the salary and the compensation of the town's elected officials. The information is found on page 28 of the report. The article is offered by the Board of Selectmen, and I would ask Warrant Committee person Martha Festa if you have a motion for us.
Move that the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of the following elected officers: moderator, town clerk, selectmen, assessors, school committee, trustees of the public library, park and recreation commissioners, planning board, housing authority, and trust fund commissioners effective July 1, 2014, by adopting the Warrant Committee recommendations as printed in the warrant. The Warrant Committee recommends passage of Article 15.
Okay. Are there any questions on Article 15, as it appears in the warrant, or on the motion that Ms. Festa just read? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it passes unanimously. Article 16 is an article to amend the Personnel Administration Plan regarding certain classifications of positions and pay schedules as set forth in the warrant. The article is found on page 29 of the report. It is offered by the Personnel Board, and Martha, do you have a motion for us?
Yes. Move that the Personnel Administration Plan and classification of positions and pay schedule be amended effective July 1, 2014, as set out in the warrant. The Warrant Committee recommends passage of Article 16.
Any questions and comments on Article 16? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare that the motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're now going to go to a sequence of motions that begin with, or of articles, excuse me, that begin with Article 31. And 31 is a general provision to adopt the codification of our town charter, bylaws, and regulations. Following that, we will go to 32 and 33. These are the three articles that were sponsored by the Charter and Bylaw Review Committee, then go to Article 30, which is a bylaw provision, then 34, 35, 36, and 43. So, what links them all together is that they all pertain to our town's bylaws, either our general bylaws or our zoning bylaws. So, I would ask Warrant Committee person Joanna Hilbert if you have a motion on Article 31.
We do. Move to codify Town of Medfield Charter, Bylaws, and Regulations as described in the warrant and set out in a document entitled "Medfield Recodification Final Draft, February 2014", on file in the office of the town clerk.
Thank you. Do you have a report?
Yes. Voters at the April 30, 2012, annual town meeting appropriated money to engage the services of a municipal code publisher to codify the town's charter and bylaws. The Town Charter and Bylaw Review Committee retained a firm and has been working with them to accomplish the codification. The result of their work is reflected in this article and the next two articles. This article seeks voter approval of the codification format only. The next two articles seek approval of changes to content.
Discussion on the motion on Article 31. We also have members of our Bylaw and Charter Review Committee, Chairman Russ Halasy.
First, I'd like to acknowledge the committee that worked with this: Alyssa Franco, Cynthia Green, Steve Nolan, David Wang, and myself, Russ Halasy. Also, our town moderator participated in the beginning of the deliberations. Our committee was initially charged to review the town charter and town bylaw, distinguished from the zoning bylaw. The town charter provides that this process is to be done every five years, when in fact it has not been done for some time longer than that. I'm not actually sure when it was last done. While the initial intent was to see if any changes of substance were warranted, it was determined that the first phase of this process should be the codification of all of our town laws into one central document in electronic form for access by town officials and the general public. The codification process included reorganizing, renumbering, and rearranging, updating language to be consistent with and in compliance with state and statutes and regulations, and even to be consistent with the original documents and with existing situations in our town government. We also decided to include the zoning bylaw and reach out to other town departments to see if their rules and regulations should be included. The result is the town code, which consists of the town charter, the town bylaw, and the zoning bylaw. We decided to include as appendix items such town boards and department rules and regulations that would be helpful for informational purposes and to serve as a central repository. These will remain separate from the town code, allowing each department or board to continue to make changes without the need to go to town meeting for approval. Article 31 is simply to establish the structure of the code: the town charter, the town bylaw, the zoning bylaw, and the appendix, with no substantive changes. Article 32 deals with the town bylaw. Article 33 deals with the town zoning bylaw. Both are in three parts: the first, to make minor ministerial amendments; the second, to update titles of town boards and officers; and the third, to make And the third, to make minor substantive changes. The result will also provide a cleaner starting base for working on a more in-depth substantive review for changes to be presented at next year's town meeting.
Any questions, comments on the motion on Article 31, the motion on the floor? If there are none, we'll put this to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare that the motion carries unanimously. Article 32. Article 32, found on page 59 of the report, also offered by the Charter and Bylaw Review Committee, is an article that relates to the codification of miscellaneous amendments to the town's general bylaws, and I would ask Joanna Hilvert for a motion.
Move to amend Town of Medfield bylaws as described in the warrant and set out in a document entitled "Medfield Recodification Final Draft, February 2014," on file in the office of the Town Clerk. This article seeks voter approval of changes to the content of the town's general non-zoning bylaws. These consist of both non-substantive editorial changes and substantive changes. The non-substantive changes include capitalization, spelling, and updated position agency titles. The substantive changes include updated statutory references, an increase in the amount of fines for noncompliance with the town's dog control bylaw, clarification of a portion of the town's historic district bylaw, correction of town's bylaw authorizing revocation or denial of a local license or permit for failure to pay taxes, clarification of definition of noise bylaw, and increase of limit from 500 to 1,000 for senior tax work-off program. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions or comments regarding Article 32, the article for the codification of miscellaneous amendments to the town charter and bylaws? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it passes unanimously. Article 33. Article 33 is an article, also again, offered by the Charter and Bylaw Review Committee, found on page 64 of the warrant report, is an article that provides for the codification of miscellaneous amendments now to the zoning bylaws, to our town zoning bylaws. And again, Ms. Hilvert, do you have a motion for us?
Yes. Move to amend Town of Medfield zoning bylaw as described in the warrant and set out in a document entitled "Medfield Recodification Final Draft, February 2014," on file at the office of the Town Clerk. This article seeks voter approval of changes to the content of the town zoning bylaw. These consist of both non-substantive editorial changes and substantive changes. The non-substantive changes include capitalization, spelling, and updated agency titles. The substantive changes include deletion of certain unused definitions, clarification of certain dimensional requirements, and rewriting of a portion of the signed bylaw for clarification. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Okay, because this is an amendment to the zoning bylaws, it's required by statute to need a two-thirds vote. So this article requires a two-thirds vote. And do we have a report from the Planning Board?
Yes, I'm George Lester, Chairman of the Planning Board, and we have a report that pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, as amended, the Medfield Planning Board held a public hearing on Monday, March 17, 2014, commencing at 8:05 PM at the Town House, to consider amending the zoning bylaw as set out in Article 33 of the warrant and as proposed by the Charter and Bylaw Review Committee. The public hearing was duly posted and advertised in the Medfield Press on February 28 and March 7, 2014. We considered the article, held the hearing, and as stated in the warrant, this article enacts certain renumbering, recapping, and revisions to the text of the zoning bylaw of the town, as noted by strike-throughs, including deletions and underlines, indicating additions, all as set forth in the document entitled "Medfield Recodification Final Draft, February 2014," on file in the office of the Town Clerk since February 20, 2014. No one at the hearing spoke in opposition to the article, and the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend passage of Article 33.
George, thank you. Are there any questions or comments on Article 33, or the motion on Article 33? Reminding that this requires a two-thirds for passage, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it passes unanimously. Article 30. Article 30 is an amendment of the town bylaws to remove limitations on town meeting speakers. Can be found on page 57 of the report, was offered by the Town Council and by the town moderator, and Joanna Hilvert has a motion.
Move to amend Town of Medfield bylaws, Article 1, Section 4, to authorize the Town Clerk to take action as printed in the warrant. The present bylaw limits town meeting discussion under an article to one speaker for and one speaker against, each for no more than two minutes unless town meeting votes to extend. Because discussion regularly exceeds the limit, this has required each town meeting to vote to extend discussion at the outset of the meeting. The proposed amendment will improve meeting efficiency by authorizing the moderator to exercise discretion as to the number of speakers and length of discussion without the need for a town meeting vote each time. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Thank you. Mr. Sorrell.
I'd recommend a friendly amendment that the motion move read, move to amend the Town of Medfield bylaws, Article 1, Section 4, and to authorize the Town Clerk to take action with the word "all" added, "all" as printed in the warrant.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the amendment carries. Now we're going to vote on the motion read by Ms. Hilvert. All in favor of the motion on Article 30, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deem that it carries unanimously. Article 34 is found on page 69 of the report, was offered by the Medfield Energy Committee and the Board of Selectmen. It's a motion to amend town zoning bylaws to create a large-scale solar photovoltaic overlay district in Medfield. And Warrant Committee Person Greg Sullivan, do you have a motion?
Yes. Move that Article 34 be approved as summarized in the warrant as set out in full in a document on file at the Town Clerk's office to authorize the Town Clerk to take action as printed in the warrant. Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Okay, this requires a two-thirds vote. Are there any questions or comments? Go back to microphone number one for George Lester from the Planning Board.
Yes, thank you. This is a zoning article, this is a report from the Planning Board. Pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, as amended, the Medfield Planning Board held a public hearing on Monday, March 17, 2014, commencing at 8:05 PM at the Town House, to consider amending the zoning bylaw as set out in Article 34. The public hearing was duly posted and advertised in the Medfield Press on February 28 and March 7, 2014. As stated in the warrant, this article creates a new zoning bylaw, Section 19, titled "Solar Voltaic Overlay District," for the PVOD (in parentheses), for the purpose of regulating the siting and permitting of large-scale ground-mounted solar voltaic installations. The Medfield Energy Committee presented their article and worked with the Planning Board to address some initial concerns about the language, and no one at the hearing spoke in opposition to the article. The public hearing was continued to March 24, 2014, for the Planning Board to review edits that were discussed with the Energy Committee, and at that time, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend passage of Article 34.
Questions and comments regarding the motion on Article 34?
The Board of Selectmen, in addition to sponsoring this article, voted unanimously in favor of it. This is two parts of, this is one of two articles that would enable Medfield to become a green community. The goal of getting the green community's status is not only that it is, we are a green community, and that we should get recognized for it, but also the state will give us $148,000 grant the minute that we had become a green community. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If there are none, we'll put Article 34 to a vote, requires a two-thirds majority. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it passes unanimously. Article 35 is an article to amend the town general bylaws to adopt a stretch code for building construction. Article 35 was offered again by the Medfield Energy Committee and the Board of Selectmen. Can be found on page 69 on the report of the warrant. We do not have a positive motion from the warrant committee, so we would need a positive motion from the sponsor.
I move that the town will vote to enact Article 35 of the Town of Medfield bylaws entitled "Stretch Energy Code for the Purpose of Regulating the Design and Construction of Buildings for the Effective Use of Energy pursuant to Appendix 115AA of the Massachusetts Building Code 780CMR, the Stretch Energy Code as set out in the warrant.
Thank you, Marie. Can you just introduce yourself?
My name is Marie Nolan, and I am Chairman of the Medfield Energy Committee.
Thank you. We'll strike the first one. This is the motion?
This is fine. Everybody else was shortening their motion, so I tried to do it as well. But, okay, so, starting from pursuant to Appendix 115AA of the Massachusetts Building Code 780CMR, the Stretch Energy Code, including future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto, with a concurrence start date of January 1, 2015, and a sole effective date of July 1, 2015, a copy of which is on file in the office of the Town Clerk, and to authorize the Town Clerk to renumber or take any other action necessary to reformat this new bylaw to fit within the new codification of the town's existing bylaws if approved by this town meeting or do or act anything in relation thereto.
Great. Thank you. And we have a majority report from Mr. Markucci of the Warrant Committee.
Yes, we do. The Warrant Committee recommends dismissal of Article 35, and does not believe it is in the interest of the Town of Medfield to adopt the Stretch Code at this time. While we appreciate the efforts of the Medfield Energy Committee to obtain green community status for Medfield, the costs of the Stretch Code to Medfield's residents are not justified by the benefits to the town. In particular, we are mindful that these costs will fall most heavily on those of our citizens least able to bear them. First, the $148,000 grant is a one-time grant to be used only for energy efficiency projects. It will not lower the tax rate, nor can it be used to achieve other longstanding priorities. Secondly, the Stretch Code will increase costs on Medfield residents who wish to renovate or remodel their homes. The burden of these costs will fall primarily on those of our residents with the most limited incomes. The renovations at issue may be necessary and not optional or cosmetic. We think in particular of seniors or others living on fixed incomes who may need to make renovations for safety reasons or to accommodate physical limitations. Implementing the Stretch Code will increase their costs. The supporters of this article have put out charts showing that the increased upfront costs of the Stretch Code will be offset by energy savings later on. The warrant committee takes no position on whether these hypotheticals are accurate. Even if those projections are correct, there is nothing to prevent homeowners from choosing to build to the Stretch Code or beyond to capture these savings. Indeed, we believe that if it is cost-effective to build to the Stretch Code, the citizens of Medfield will choose what is in their best interest without it being forced upon them in the name of well-meaning paternalism. Third, adopting the code will add uncertainty, and therefore cost, to commercial and residential development at a time when Medfield is seeking additional development and is looking to increase commercial development as a path to mitigate the need for additional residential taxes. Medfield already has its challenges as a site for commercial development, and adopting the Stretch Code in its current and future iterations will only increase the cost and make it less attractive. Finally, we would be committing the town to future, yet to be written, versions of the Stretch Code, whose costs may be higher than the current code. The early adopters will be the ones left to work out the kinks before architects and builders have had time to adjust the new rules and develop cost-effective means of compliance. Given that everyone will have the option to build or renovate to the code or beyond, we do not believe it wise to make such an open-ended commitment. Ultimately, it is likely a relatively small minority of Medfield residents who will be negatively impacted by the Stretch Code, but we must always consider how our decisions impact those least able to bear the costs of those decisions, and for these reasons, the warrant committee recommends dismissal of Article 35.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Markucci. And Mr. Sullivan, do you have a minority report from the Warrant Committee?
I do. The Warrant Committee, my minority report in favor of passage of Article 35. We wish to clarify that this article is not proposing the introduction of a new energy code to the Town of Medfield, as new buildings, additions, and renovations are presently required to adhere to an existing Massachusetts Energy Code. The first energy codes in the United States were developed in 1970s in response to the OPEC oil embargo and energy crisis of that decade. The first energy codes were meant to lessen and try to eliminate the United States dependence on foreign energy sources as both a national and economic security issue. The energy used in today's commercial and residential buildings account for over 40% of the total energy used in the United States. So the building energy codes are critical in controlling and conserving the consumption of the nation's energy resources. The original intent of the national energy codes as a policy of national energy independence continues to this day, but we now have realized that there are additional benefits that include money savings, water conservation, the reduced emissions, and health issues related to pollution, as well as reduction in man-made greenhouse gases. The United States now uses the International Energy Conservation Codes, the IECC, that is then adopted by the different states. In 2012, the IECC is the most recent published version, but presently, the Massachusetts only adopted the 2009 version of the IECC. The present Massachusetts Stretch Code was adopted in 2009 and closely mimics the 2012 version of the IECC. Massachusetts will be adopting this newer 2012 version of the IECC as its standard energy code as of July of this year, 2014. This will make the required Massachusetts Energy Code and the Stretch Code virtually the same until Massachusetts elects to adopt a new Stretch Energy Code sometime in the near future, if a new code is adopted at all. The next Massachusetts Stretch Energy Code will most likely incorporate significant portions of 2015 IECC, which is due to be published later this year, 2014. From published reports, much of the changes in the 2015 IECC related to residential construction will include new performance paths to compliance that are easier for the public to understand and implement, but will require homes to be slightly more efficient, energy-efficient than the 2012 IECC. Without going into detailed minutia of the energy codes, please also know that neither the new Energy Code nor the new Stretch Code will retroactively require existing buildings to comply with the latest codes. Only new buildings, and when a minimum threshold for new additions or renovations is met, will the new codes come into effect, and then only on those portions of buildings, of the building affected by the new work. Doing renovations or additions will not require the whole building or home to meet the newest Energy Code. The voters should know that the adoption of the Stretch Energy Code will not have any additional effect on the costs of any new town building being proposed for construction. It has been the permanent building committee's objective to design and build the town's new buildings to meet this new Stretch Energy Code, because the committee already sees the cost benefits of constructing buildings to the higher energy standards. The vote on this article should not focus too much on the specifics of the present Stretch Energy Code or its cost. The present Stretch Energy Code will become the required minimum energy code in two months. The codes related to the building industry are continually being changed, updated, and adopted approximately every three years. As a consequence, the Massachusetts Stretch Energy Code will become part of the required Massachusetts Standard Energy Code approximately every three years, and a new Stretch Code may possibly take its place. Much of the arguments against adopting the present Stretch Code because of additional costly homeowner will also be moot in two months, as the special requirements adding these, most of the cost will become part of the Standard Energy Code as of July 1, 2014. These additional costs are also typically a fairly small percentage of the overall cost of construction. The minority voting members believe that as the new Stretch Codes are developed and are adopted, their additional cost burden on the homeowner will be lessened but still create financial paybacks. The minority voting members of the Warrant Committee feel that the taxpayers should vote in favor of it on the adoption of the Stretch Energy Code, because the higher energy standards and the required verification of the energy performance of our buildings and homes in Medfield provide us with the consumer protection that the buildings and renovations we pay for will perform as they should. The higher standards we implement by committing to adopting the Stretch Energy Code will have many tangible benefits to the individual homeowner, the community, and the entire nation. Medfield will also be taking the philosophical stance that Medfield is doing more than the minimum requirement to conserve energy in the built environment, and that this will help create a country less dependent on foreign energy sources and more control of our energy future.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, as offered by Marie Nolan and the Medfield Energy Committee. Questions and comments? Microphone number one.
Scott Caldwell.
Scott Caldwell. As a builder who has a lot of experience in codes and working with this issue, first of all, let me say that, I will say the homes that I do build exceed the Stretch Code, because I'm an energy star builder, so I'm very familiar with the costs. The costs that are shown on this handout, I hate to tell you, are way off, and probably about 50% of what the true cost is to do this, which changes the net savings drastically. This really isn't going to affect new construction, because most of the new homes being built in town meet the Stretch Code anyway. It is going to affect every homeowner who decides to remodel their home. To meet these new requirements, it means you're going to spend more on windows, more on insulation, more on framing techniques. Whatever renovation you're going to do in your home, it's going to cost you more. That's a guarantee. I can promise you that. The bigger concern I have is particularly the two big projects we have coming up, which is the police and fire station and the potential development of the state hospital. There are a lot of people that would like to preserve certain buildings at the state hospital grounds. The Stretch Energy Code makes it almost impossible to bring those buildings up to code. Their costs will be, we'll never be able to get a payback on it. It's just, it just will not work. So, I know it's a very confusing issue for people. I work with it every day. I'm familiar with it, and I can tell you this, it's going to cost you more, and the payback is so many years out, most of you will never see the return on investment.
We have a report from the Medfield Energy Committee.
Hi. Again, my name is Marie Nolan. I'm Chair of the Medfield Energy Committee. The Medfield Energy Committee is cosponsor with the Board of Selectmen of this warrant Article 35. This is the second of two articles, 34 and 35, before you tonight. The town needs to pass before Medfield can be designated a green community by the state. I would like to give you a bit of a background, let's comment to both articles first. The committee held two public forums in March on the Stretch Energy Code, the solar bylaw, and becoming a green community. So some of this information may be familiar to some of you, especially to some of the builders that attended the forum. The Board of Selectmen established the Medfield Energy Committee in 2008 with a goal to reduce the town's energy consumption by 20%. The town's departments and buildings, with some technical help from our committee, have met that goal, saving the town over $200,000 per year. The Energy Committee has now set its sights on new targets that will make both public and private buildings even more energy-efficient and reduce more greenhouse gas emissions that lead to global warming. These goals are, one, implementing more energy efficiency and conservation measures at municipal buildings; two, promoting renewable energy generation that is solar within the town; and three, promoting energy efficiency of residential buildings in town, since homes comprise 70% of Medfield's energy use. 9% is municipal, and 21% is commercial, if you want to think about the whole pie. So besides being good for the environment, these actions will save the town and its residents more money over the long term. To this end, we'd like our town to be designated a green community by the state. This would provide us with monies, $148,000 to start, and technical support from the Green Community Division. Since the program started in 2008, 123 Massachusetts towns have qualified as green communities, and the Mass Department of Energy Resources has dispersed $10 million per year in grants. We feel as though we are already green in many respects, and we would like the town to benefit from the formal designation. The town must meet five criteria to qualify. First, provide siting for renewable energy. Second, to enable permitting within one year for those sites, which warrant Article 34 has done for us. Three, develop a plan for reducing municipal energy by an additional 20% over five years. Four, enact an energy-efficient vehicle policy, which will be done this summer if we keep going ahead with this. And five, adopt the Stretch Energy Code for new construction and renovations. Warrant Article 35 to establish the large, to establish the Stretch Code will achieve the fifth criteria. Now for the reasoning behind this warrant article. You have to bear with me. Okay. In Massachusetts, cities and towns are required to follow the State Building and Energy Code. However, as concerns mount about rising energy costs, national dependence on foreign energy sources, and climate change, many municipalities have asked the state for the right to adopt a code with a stronger energy efficiency component. As part of the Green Communities Act of 2008, Massachusetts developed a second-tier building code that gives cities and towns the ability to choose stronger energy performance in buildings. This optional energy code is known as the Stretch Code, which hopefully you realize that by now from all our talks so far. This Stretch Code strengthens the energy efficiency code requirements in municipalities that adopt it. The Stretch Code improves energy efficiency through requirements such as more insulation, tighter air sealing, and more efficient lighting, appliances, and equipment. As a result, the cost of heating and cooling will decrease. The Stretch Code covers new construction and renovations and additions. It has no effect on a house for sale. It has no effect on an existing house unless its owner undertakes a renovation that requires a building permit. Stretch Code requirements only apply to the systems being altered in the renovation. For example, if you are changing windows, you need code-compliant, efficient windows. But if you're changing your heating system, you can keep your old windows, but the heating system must be code-compliant. Replacing broken windows or storm windows does not trigger building code compliance requirements. If an addition is built, the new Stretch Code only applies to the addition. The Stretch Code also applies to new commercial construction over 5,000 square feet in area. Commercial building renovations are exempt from the Stretch Code as are specialty buildings such as supermarkets and warehouses that contain less than 40,000 square feet of floor area. Affordable housing projects constructed under 40B are also exempt, as well as some historical buildings. Under the Stretch Code, a newly constructed building must follow a performance track based on a home energy rating system called a HERS rating. This involves hiring a HERS raider who is trained to measure the energy efficiency of a building. A renovation can follow either a performance or a prescriptive track. The prescriptive track involves installing specific energy efficiency measures such as adding insulation and air sealing. The Stretch Code does not require the replacement of existing boilers, furnaces, or water heaters. Complying with the Stretch Code will actually save a homeowner money. There are initial added costs of construction, but money will be saved over the long term. New residential buildings built under the Stretch Code will be 15% to 20% more efficient than the current base code. As you can see in the table in your flyer, DOR published a study and estimated that the added construction costs to meet the Stretch Code for a new house range from approximately $3,000 to $7,000, depending on the size of the home. Annual energy savings from lower utility bills would be between $500 and $1,500 per year in these examples. The added efficiency measure for a typical single-family home with three bedrooms would be paid off in approximately six years. Furthermore, if a homeowner would take out a 30-year mortgage to finance a new home, then the increased annual costs of the loan to cover the energy measures would be less than the annual energy savings. We think this published analysis is conservative, in that it does not include the financial incentives and rebates available to homeowners through their electric and gas utilities and the Mass Save Program that further reduce the upfront costs and allow for even faster returns on the investment in energy-saving measures. Already, 134 towns and cities in Massachusetts out of 351 have adopted the Stretch Energy Code, including some of our neighbors, Westwood, Sherburne, Midway, and Hopkinton, some as far back as three years ago. Our committee did a survey on how some of these towns fared since enacting the Stretch Code. I spoke to the town managers or building inspectors for three of these towns, and not one of them reported any problems or complaints since their enactment. Westwood said it was the price to build in Westwood. They were concerned initially about the University Avenue project that they have by Route 128 that has retail housing and lots of various kinds of development, and has not affected it at all. The developer has moved ahead with, the various developers, and the project moved ahead with their plans. If you vote to adopt the Stretch Energy Code, there will be a six-month period starting January 1 of next year during which both the Stretch Code and the Standard Building Code will be in effect. Then in July 2015, the Stretch Code will become the only operative building code. Our building commissioner, John Naff, is very knowledgeable about the Stretch Code. He understands why it is effective as a means of saving money and energy, and is supportive of its enforcement if the town adopts it. He has been very helpful in this process of understanding the Stretch Code and its impacts. He's also sitting in the audience over there as a visitor. A carrot for adopting this warrant article and the other criteria needed to become a green community is that we become eligible for state grants. The initial one will be $148,000 based on Medfield's characteristics. We would also be eligible for more green community competitive grants in the future. The town already has a long list of energy conservation measures for municipal buildings and systems that it would like to spend that money on. One concern that has been expressed is that by adopting the Stretch Energy Code, we will be automatically adopting future Stretch Energy Codes adopted by the state. This is true. But base building codes are updated in cycles by the state, and eventually, to catch up to the Stretch Code. In fact, this July 2014, all towns and cities in Massachusetts will be under the new Stretch Energy, the new state, sorry, Energy Base Code, which is similar to the current Stretch Code. The state is taking comments now from the public to decide how to fashion a future Stretch Energy Code that will improve the efficiency of buildings even more, but still provide life-cycle cost benefits to owners. Becoming a Stretch Code community means that Medfield would automatically be under a future Stretch Code, but that is unlikely to take effect before 2016. If Medfield decides that it does not want to be under this or a future Stretch Code, it can vote to opt out in the future. One may ask why we need the Stretch Code if installing energy efficiency measures are such an obvious benefit? Why can't we just let the market take care of the problem? Well, the market is far from a perfect communicator of the benefits of energy efficiency. For example, the home builder and home buyer are generally not one in the same. Home builders are often more concerned with reducing construction costs, and home buyers are concerned with construction costs and operating costs. It's more difficult and expensive to install energy efficiency measures after a structure is built. Further, it costs time and money to disseminate information on energy-efficient construction, so home builders and homeowners may not be aware of construction techniques that can save energy and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Finally, the retail cost of energy does not incorporate all the societal costs of consuming home-eating oil and natural gas. The principal one being the impacts of greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to global warming. In closing, adopting the Stretch, [laughing], if you're listening, you're being very quiet. Thank you. In closing, adopting the Stretch Code would mean that new construction and significant renovations in Medfield would be more energy-efficient. This will save money for individual homeowners and businesses. Adoption of the Stretch Code will reduce Medfield's production of greenhouse gases. Buildings represent approximately 40% of U.S. carbon emissions. Buildings last a long time, and building codes are an ideal way to address building energy consumption, one that will have a lasting positive impact on the environment. Please vote yes on Article 35.
Okay. Thank you.[1392.51][1392.51][applause] Got two questions here. Let me just, those two folks who are there, two questions or comments?
Jim Nail, 97 Hartford Street, Medfield. We're talking a lot about sort of energy use and financial impact. I'm going to take it a little bit further, but on the financial impact, the gentleman who spoke before, who's a builder, said that the costs in this flyer were perhaps 50% too low. Fact of the matter is, if you double the costs on here and then look at the impact on payments, it's still a break-even. So financially, the Stretch Code is still, at worst, a break-even, and at best, very positive financially. I also want to hark back to the opening statement in which we talked about the 20, past 20 years, and the foresight that we've had in this town meeting to make smart investments in the town, and the hope that 20 years from now, 30 years from now, 40 years from now, residents will look back on the actions we take and have a similar gratitude to the actions that we take today. As we think in those kinds of terms, we have to think not just about financial, but about the impact of climate change. The latest Intergovernmental Panel report on climate change has once again proven that climate change is an impact of burning fossil fuels, is an impact of man's use of fossil fuels, and that if action is not taken to reduce that very quickly in the next 10, 20 years, the impact in the future will be very dramatic and very disturbing. This is a town that cares about our children and our grandchildren. We regularly at this meeting vote for Proposition 2 1/2 overrides for the schools, for other things that benefit our children. This is one of those votes that will benefit our children and our grandchildren, and I urge passage of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
The Board of Selectmen, again, is sponsoring this and voting unanimously in favor of it. I have just five quick points in less than a minute. First of all, it's not really whether you're going to get a Stretch Code or not. We're all going to get the Stretch Code eventually. It's a question of whether you want to be an early adopter of the Stretch Code or not. I think Medfield should be an early adopter. The Stretch Code makes sense, because you get a tighter building, you get a tighter structure, it's better for the planet, as the prior speaker just said, it's better for the homeowner, because they're going to save money in the long run. It's not going to affect what we do at Medfield State Hospital. Those buildings up there can't be used, because they're in such a bad shape, and the seismic code will prevent their being reused. You just can't rebuild those buildings to meet the seismic code. It has nothing to do with the Stretch Code. And lastly, we'll get the $148,000 grant, and we can use that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Two short comments on microphone number one.
Two short comments. Richard Judge, Juniper Lane. Well, I honorably disagree with the Selectmen about the viability of use of the buildings and potential salvageability of the buildings. I do agree on all the other points. I just wanted a quick question. If we adopt the Stretch Code tonight, it's, we're entitled to $148,000, the town? And if we adopt it tonight, we're entitled to $148,000. This code is going to be put in place in two months anyhow? Am I, is there anyone that?
There are five conditions necessary to qualify as a green community. These are two of them. There are three others. One is purchase of energy-efficient vehicles. One is a commitment to reduce your energy consumption within the five-year period by 20%. And the other one is to adopt expedited permitting for energy-related projects. Once you've adopted all five of those, you qualify for a green community. The other part of your question was?
No, the qualification for the $148,000.
You have to be [inaudible].
A green community, you have to, all five of those. Okay. Thank you.
...that too, is that the expedited permitting is also covered with the solar bylaws. So the schedule would be this summer, we would, we've already drafted a plan, we'd finalize the plan, and give ways that we would reduce energy in the municipal buildings. And then we'd also, we have a draft of policy, we've already inventory of the town vehicles, and you have to say that they're going to be energy-efficient in the future. And then in the fall, we do, we apply to become a green community, and when we do so, then they will give us grant money. And we've talked to them, and it looks like, given on our characteristics, that that's the amount we'll get, $148,000 initially.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Hi. Christine Babson, Indian Hill Road. I've attended the meetings that the Energy Committee has held, and everything that she read is actually in a very nice PowerPoint presentation, which is a lot easier to absorb. There are a lot of, a lot of thought has gone into this, a lot of really good rationale has gone into it. I don't even want to get into that. To me, the key point is, we have to do it anyway. Stop. End of sentence. All the stuff about green committee, that's great. I would like us to be a green community, rather. But that's not what we're asking right now. What we're asking is whether or not we are going to do something that we'll have to do in two months anyway.
Thank you. These are our final two comments before we put her to a vote. Microphone number one.
Hi. Tamara Small from Tamarack Road. I just want to make a few quick points. First, every major real estate association in the state is opposed to the Stretch Code because of the significant costs associated with that. That means the Home Builders Association of Massachusetts, the Mass Association of Realtors, and now the Commercial Real Estate Development Association have all strongly objected to the Stretch Code. Number two, yes, in July, when the state adopts IECC 2012 as its base code, every community in the state is essentially going to be on the same level. That's the state building code and the Stretch Code will be on the same level playing field. However, the Massachusetts State Department of Energy Resources is now contemplating the new version of the Stretch Code, which is what we will be adopting tonight if we vote to do this. We don't know what that's going to be. There have been-- There have been public meetings where they're hinting at what it could be. What they've said at those meetings is that it would be a 35% increase in energy efficiency requirements over what we currently have as our energy code here in Medfield. A 35% increase. It could be more, it could be less. But if we vote tonight to adopt the stretch code, we will be required to adopt it, whatever it is, starting on January 1st, 2015. So for that, I strongly urge everyone here to vote against it.
Thank you. Just a final comment right here. Microphone number two.
Hi. Tom Blessing, 24 Tobrec. Just one question. If this is such a good idea, how come 40B housing isn't subject to it if the payback is so quick?[640.16][640.16](applause)
Any comments to the question? Okay.
We do have a representative from the state who can answer some of these last questions that were just posed.
About 40B housing? I don't know that we're going to... Question before us is, why isn't 40B housing included in the stretch code?
It's excluded from all the energy codes. So it's looked upon that any type of 40B, and earlier it was mentioned about accessibility, the accessibility code trumps the energy code as well. So earlier, when it was said that this would put an undue burden on people actually having to bring their home up for a long-term accessibility, the accessibility code supersedes the energy code.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Everybody comfortable? We're going to put Article number 35 to a vote. This article requires just a simple majority for passage. It's the motion. We're voting on the motion that Marie Nolan read a few minutes ago. And so we'll first do this by saying aye or nay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Okay. So we're going to do a show of hands if we could. All in favor, please raise your hand and hold your hands up. Okay. All opposed? I'm going to deem that it fails to pass. Any seven members that want to come forward? I ask we are entitled to a standing count. Anybody want to come forward? That's two. Come forward, please. You want to see the show of hands again? Okay. Let's throw a show of hands. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? It needs a majority. It's a simple majority. Anybody want to join as well in a standing count? If there is none, I'm going to deem that the motion fails. Okay. We're going to move to Article number 43. Article 43 is an amendment of the town zoning bylaws to change the name of a medical marijuana treatment facility to a medical marijuana dispensary. Was offered by the Planning Board... Oh, sorry. We'll come back to... I skipped 36. Sorry about that. Article 36 is an amendment to town general bylaws, of the town general bylaws now to prohibit public consumption of marijuana. It can be found on page 70 of the warrant report. Was offered by the Board of Selectmen, and the motion will be provided by Mr. Markucci of the Warrant Committee.
Move to amend the town bylaws, Article 4, Police Regulations, by adding a new Section 35. Public consumption of marijuana or tetrahydrocannabinol prohibited, and authorize the town clerk to take action, all as set out in the warrant. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Questions, comments regarding Article 36? Requires just a simple majority for passage. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
There we go. The article passes by the majority required. Article 43 is the last of our bylaw issues. It's to amend the town zoning bylaws to change the name Medical Marijuana Treatment Facility to Medical Marijuana Dispensary. Can be found on page 74 of the warrant report. It's offered by the Planning Board. And Mr. Markucci, do you have a motion for us?
We move that Article 43 be approved, that the town clerk to take action, all as set out in the warrant. And our report is that this changes the name in the town bylaw to comply with the state terminology used, and the Warrant Committee recommends passage.
And do we have a Planning Board report?
You, Mr. Moderator. George Lester from the Planning Board. As a zoning, as this is a zoning article, we have jurisdiction. Our report is that pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, as amended, the Medfield Planning Board held a public hearing on Monday, March 17th, 2014, commencing at 8:05 PM at the Town House, to consider amending the zoning bylaw as set out in Article 43. The public hearing was duly posted and advertised in the Medfield Press on February 28th and March 7th, 2014. As stated in the warrant, this article amends Medfield zoning bylaw Section 5.4.4.10A by striking the term Medical Marijuana Treatment Center and replacing it with the term Registered Marijuana Dispensary in accordance with Section, with 105 Code of Massachusetts Regulations, Section 725.004. No one at the hearing spoke in opposition to the article. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend passage of Article 43.
Any further questions or comments? If there are none, we will put the motion on Article 43 to a vote. It does require a two-thirds vote, as it is an amendment to our zoning bylaws. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it passes unanimously. Okay. Take a deep breath. We're 24 articles gone and 19 to go. So we've moved through more than half of our articles, and we will now go to our lottery system. First article pulled is Article number 44. Article 44 is an article that addresses the adoption of the local option sales tax on meals. It can be found on page 74 of the warrant report. Article 44 was offered by the Board of Selectmen, and Warrant Committee person Martha Fester has a motion.
Move that the town accept the provisions of GL, Chapter 64L, Section 2A. The Warrant Committee recommends passage of Article 44, but our reasoning is not to give the town more money to spend, but to shift a small portion of the tax burden from homeowners to restaurant patrons. Medfield faces significant near-term needs for infrastructure, maintenance, and capital programs, and significant long-term needs to address unfunded liabilities. The financial burden for meeting those needs falls almost exclusively on Medfield property owners. Most of our neighboring towns have adopted a local meals tax with no apparent impact on local restaurants. We believe that few, if any, diners think about the extra 3/4 of a percent sales tax when considering a restaurant visit. On a $100 restaurant bill, that would add up to 75 cents. But to Medfield, it would generate an estimated $100,000 annually in revenue. The Warrant Committee is in favor of a measure that shifts some tax burden from property owners to restaurant patrons. The Warrant Committee recommends passage of Article 44.
Any questions and comments on the motion on Article 44? Mr. Sorger.
The Board of Selectmen unanimously urges you to vote yes on this article for the option of the meal tax. As was stated, currently, there are 172 cities and towns in Massachusetts that have adopted the meal option. The amount of the tax is 3/4 of 1%. That's 3/4 of 1%. And again, on a $50 meal, that's 37 cents. Or as they just said, on a $100 meal, that's 75 cents. Now, Medfield is surrounded by towns that already have the meal tax, meaning you and I, every time we go to eat in those surrounding towns, we are contributing to that town, whether we're reducing their property taxes, improving their recreational needs, helping with the education of their children, or building them a new senior center. Our money is going to help that town. Now, the towns around Medfield that we are helping every time we go out to eat that have adopted the meal tax include Norwood, Walpole, Norfolk, Remtham, Sherbin, Needham, Brookline, Waltham, Braintree, Easton, Framingham, Franklin, Newton, Norton, Plainville, Wellesley, Wayward, and Millis. They're collecting their 3/4 of 1% and using it to help their community. The Selectmen in Medfield are working hard to try to come up with some creative ideas to lower our property taxes. We are at a disadvantage in that we have so little industry in Medfield and so little industrial-owned land, unlike a Westwood or a Needham that has a Route 128, or a Hawkington that has a Route 495. We are facing many expensive but necessary projects, from the new DPW garage to the proposed public safety building to the proposed water tower. But we support the quality-of-life projects that are needed in Medfield, but we cannot just keep raising property taxes. I don't believe that anyone out here sits and asks which towns have a meal tax before they go out to eat. I don't believe people even know which towns have it and which towns don't. If you look at Zebras, for example, I believe more than 50% that go to Zebras are not from Medfield. We are bringing out-of-town people into Medfield. And if you and I can contribute to the revenue of Sherbin or Millis or Needham when we go out to eat, then what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and those from Sherbin and Millis can contribute to Medfield's revenue. It's estimated we can bring in roughly $100,000 for the improvement of our downtown area. And I want to pick up what Chairman of the Warrant Committee, Gus Murby, said, that if we can tie in improvements to our downtown, that's going to help the local restaurants, that's going to help the local businesses in town. That's also, as Selectman Peterson said, we can also use that for property tax relief. We cannot keep raising the taxes in Medfield. We have to get creative to find ways to give the property owners a break. We believe this is one way, and the Board of Selectmen strongly urges you to vote yes.
Okay. Any questions?[1290.33][1290.33](laughter)
Christian Donner, 92 Green Street. My question is, the $100,000 projected tax income, is that before or after the administrative cost, or the cost for administering and implementing the tax? And what if, what is that cost?
There is no cost as far as the town of Medfield is concerned. The tax is collected and submitted to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and then the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I believe on a quarterly basis, sends a check out to the towns, cities and towns that have adopted it for a, their share of it.
Thank you. Okay. Good question. Any other questions or comments?
Robert Autry, 9 Carroll and Drive, Medfield. This issue was on the warrant for a town meeting several years ago, and I stood up and asked a question or two about the tax. And my first question was, if the tax is passed, how long will it stay in effect?
Well, they say taxes are forever.[1355.83][1355.83](laughter) I assume it will stay until it would be rescinded by the town.
Right. And to remove it, it would take someone to put an article on the warrant to remove the additional tax on meals, should such a time come as it's not necessary anymore. Is that correct?
I'll defer to Town Council on that one. There are different ways. Sometimes you could rescind state laws, sometimes you can't. I'm not sure.
But as far as the town of Medfield is concerned...
You can only rescind it the same way you accept it, so yes, there'd be a town meeting in action.
Okay. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to amend this warrant article.
Okay.
The motion would be for the tax to sunset within two years of its passage, if it passes.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to add a provision to this article that would provide for the sunsetting of this provision within two years. Mr. Sorrel, do you have a thought?
That would be inappropriate. You either accept a state statute or you don't. It's an all-or-nothing proposition. There's some action in the future, as indicated, it could be brought, but it would have to be brought as a separate matter.
Before the town has a warrant article to rescind it, no way to sunset it. Well, the other comment I would have to make was about the towns surrounding us that already have passed it and put it in place. And my thought was, as far as Medfield is concerned, I'd like to think that Medfield is a tax-friendly state, I mean, city, and that folks that come into Medfield and buy Subway sandwiches or whatever are treated fairly by the taxes. I don't know about who comes in from other towns or doesn't. There was a period when I was going for lunch at Subway every day, and mostly I saw young kids, and mostly I saw tradesmen, and mostly I saw contractors. Not the rich folks. Less entitled financially, if you will. So if that's the basis, trying to catch the rich folks' money, that might take a little additional introspection before I would vote yes for this.
Okay. Well, thank you for your thoughts. Okay. We're putting this to a vote. Article number 44 is the article to adopt the local option sales tax on the meals relative to the motion that is on the floor. It requires only a simple majority vote in order to be able to enact. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I rule that it passes by the majority required. Next article is Article 37. Article 37 is an article to appropriate a sum of money for hiring consultants to advise on matters relating to the former Medfield State Hospital. The article can be found on page 71 of the report. It was offered by the Board of Selectmen, and Warrant Committee Chairperson Gus Murby has a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move that the town appropriate $175,000, said sum to be raised on the FY15 tax levy for the purpose of hiring consultants, engineers, and/or attorneys to advise the town on matters concerning the disposition and reuse, and/or the environmental site remediation of the former Medfield State Hospital property. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, with the understanding that the Board of Selectmen may authorize any other town board, commission, committee, or department to expend a portion of said funds for such purposes.
And do you have a report?
Yes. The Warrant Committee recommends approval. The, you can read the detailed explanation in the warrant report. I suspect most of you know that for several years now, we've funded, we've set funds aside for the state hospital property. This is a continuation of this, although I think the emphasis in the coming year will move away from the environmental monitoring and the environmental remediation toward more activities designed for the town to get prepared for redeveloping the property. The intent and the amount was to set enough money aside to support the remaining environmental compliance and monitoring that the town plans to do, to undertake the development of a master plan in preparation for redeveloping the property, and to leave an additional amount of money aside for requirements that will come up in having the town prepare to be able to redevelop the property, perhaps things like doing additional building assessments in preparation for redevelopment.
Any further questions and comments on Article 37? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. As I said, it requires just a simple majority. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll rule that it passes unanimously. Our next article is Article number 24. Article number 24 is an article to appropriate funds and authorize borrowing easements for the construction of a replacement water tower and associated water mains at the site of the former Medfield State Hospital. This article can be found on page 53 of the report on the warrant. The article was sponsored by the Water and Sewer Commission, and the Warrant Committee, member Tom Murray, has a motion.
Move that the town appropriate $6 million, and to meet said sum, $160,000 to be transferred from the unexpended balance of Article 23 of the March 26th, 2012 annual town meeting. And 500, excuse me, $5,840,000 be borrowed under the provisions of General Law's Chapter 44, Section 8, Paragraphs 4 and 5, or any other enabling statute that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to acquire by eminent domain or otherwise such easements in private property as may be necessary, and that the treasure collector with the approval of the Board of Selectmen be authorized to issue bonds for the purpose of constructing a replacement water tower and associated water mains at the site of the former Medfield State Hospital, and in such public ways as may be necessary to connect to so-called Wellsix off North Meadows Road, and to other water mains in the distribution system, and that the Water and Sewerage Commission be authorized to enter into contracts with private parties, the federal government, and/or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to accomplish said purposes.
Do you have a report, Mr. Murray?
Yes. Thank you. The Water, the Warrant Committee recommends passage of Article 24. As of the date of the printing of the report, the preliminary information that is included in this report was based on preliminary estimates. So I ask that you pay close attention to what I'm about to say. This article requests funding to build a new water storage tank, water main, site work, engineering oversight, inspection, and so forth. The overall project, which is at a cost of $6 million, and I again refer to the $160,000 being transferred from the unexpended balance dating back to 2014.
being transferred from the unexpended balance dating back to 2012, thus resulting in $5,840,000 to be borrowed, financed, and bonded over a 20-year period. The current costs are now based on a fully-designed project, and please keep in mind, the town approved an appropriation at the special town meeting in October of 2013 for $150,000. The completion will be done in two phases, one of which involves the connecting water mains, and the second involving a welded steel tank that will, upon completion, be elevated at 16 feet. There is no override required, as the debt service costs will be paid from the town's Water Enterprise Fund. The Board of Water and Sewerage has conducted a detailed water rate analysis over the past three years in anticipation of this necessary infrastructure project, and consequently has set our water rates over the past several years in anticipation of this new debt service. Medfield presently has one fully-operational water tank, the Mount Nebo Storage Tank, which has been in operation for over 30 years and has a total volume of 2.4 million gallons, and is in fact scheduled for rehabilitation in 2016. The existing state hospital tank is offline as mandated by the Mass DEP and is only available for emergencies. The new tank will have a total volume of 1.3 million gallons, thus assuring the town of stable and constant water pressure, and the added assurance of storage in the event of a water main break or fire emergency. The Warrant Committee recommends passage of Article 24.
Okay. Questions, comments regarding Article 24? Microphone number one.
Matt Prillo, Evergreen Way. I have questions not pertaining to the financial aspect of this article, but to the matter of referencing eminent domain. If this new tower is going to remain within the hospital, formerly the state hospital property, why is it necessary to have this, what seems to be a funding article, reference eminent domain, acquiring easements in private property? Do you foresee needing to exercise eminent domain and to do that? And if not, would you perhaps be open to striking that language?
And I may... Ask Mr. Sorrell if he would do to comment.
I don't know the exact layout, but it's a standard provision that we put in, so the authority's there if we need it. It has to do, in this case, with how the roots are set out for the connections that ultimately go from the water tower, since the whole system is interconnected. So it's simply giving the authority, should it be needed, to get the whole project done.
If I could just ask, so there is no specific areas that have been identified presently for this?
I would defer to somebody from Water and Sewer to answer that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeremy Marsette, Chairman of the Water and Sewer Board. There's no properties are currently identified that would need to utilize eminent domain. Actually, on April 19, the governor signs special legislation that directed DCAM to transfer the ownership of the state hospital lands in association with the state hospital tank to the town of Medfield. That process is moving forward, and we anticipate would be completed prior to the construction of the water mains and the water tank.
Thank you. I may remain there in case there's any more questions. Any further questions of the Water and Sewer Commission, or related to the motion on the floor for Article 24? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. It does require a two-thirds vote. So all in favor of the motion for Article 24, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And to deem that it carries unanimously. Article 38. Article 38 is an article to appropriate funds for construction of a Pocket Park on town-owned land between Starbucks and Zebras, and to name the park. I think we have a motion for dismissal on this.
We have a motion for dismissal.
Okay, so we would need a positive motion from the floor. Do we have a positive motion from the floor?
I don't have a positive motion.
Okay, I thought I was going to give it to Jean. Okay, we don't have a positive motion on the floor? Okay, if we don't, then we would vote in dismissal?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. I'm Matt McCormick, a member of the Pocket Park Steering Committee that this article was concerning. We were appointed by the Selectmen to define and design the town-owned space between Starbucks and Zebras downtown. We just wanted to take a chance to thank the Selectmen and the Warrant Committee for their participation in planning for the park. Special thanks also to the GPW for preliminary preparations of it, some of the site work. Thanks also to the hundreds of survey participants and others for their enthusiasm and support. The winner from our naming contest was Straw Hat Park. So we are continuing to finalize the design and begin fundraising on what will become an inviting and inclusive space for all. It's not often that Medfield gets to endorse an undertaking that so directly supports 100% of our residents. So again, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you to the Medfield Cultural Commission Council and your work on that. So we have a motion to dismiss Article number 38 on the floor. Hearing no positive motion, we'll put the motion dismissed to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deem that the motion carries. The next article is Article 18. Article 18 is an article regarding our capital budgets. The article on our capital budgets can be found on page 49 of the warrant report. It is offered by the Capital Budget Committee, and Mr. Markucci will provide a motion.
Move that the town appropriate the sum of $495,403 for capital expenditures as recommended as follows. For the town hall roof replacement, $20,000. The gazebo roof replacement, $8,000. Permit software for building cemetery planning, DPW, $25,000. Lighting system, retro pendant lighting for the library, $14,039. Upgrade thermal imaging cameras for the fire department, $15,000. Repairsment of protective clothing for the fire department, $20,000. Council on Aging, purchase and install professional sound system, $13,694. Conservation Commission land acquisition and management, $5,000. School Department masonry repairs at Wheelock School, $44,500. At the middle school, a data center UPS, $27,000. At the high school, resurfaced tennis courts, $23,000. Replace van, $44,000. For the police department, a satellite receiver, $70,000. A Ford utility vehicle, $38,000. The Department of Public Works, $40,000 to resurface subdivisions. $36,000 for a mini-track asphalt paver. $22,170 for a Flint sander number LMC 5H. And for the Parks and Recreation Department, concession and bathroom building and foundation and utilities at Metacomet Park, $30,000. And that to meet said appropriation, the following sums be raised on the fiscal 2015 tax levy or transferred from accounts or funds as followed. Tax levy, $400,000. Chapter 90 highway funds, $36,000. Unexpected, unexpended appropriation funds, $59,403.
Okay, that's the motion on the capital budget. Do we have a report?
The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Questions or comments on any of those items read by Mr. Markucci as a part of his motion? If there are none, this requires only a simple majority. All in favor of passage of the motion on the capital budgets, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it passes unanimously. Next article is Article number 42. Article number 42 is an article to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take action to confirm the town's ownership of a parcel of land on Harding Street. The article can be found on page 73 of the report. It's offered by the Town Council, and Mr. Mirby will have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move that the town authorize Board of Selectmen to accept a confirmatory instrument, make a confirmatory taking by eminent domain, or take any other action they deem necessary to confirm the town's ownership of an unimproved 5.75-acre parcel of land on Harding Street, originally acquired by deed dated July 25, 2005, and recorded at Norfolk County Registry of Deeds in Book 22738 at page 16, which deed contained a legal description referencing a recorded plan which included an inaccurate boundary description, which inaccuracy has since been corrected by an amended plan entitled "Amended Plan of Land in Medfield, Massachusetts, dated June 1, 2013, and recorded on February 10, 2014, at said registry of deeds in Plan Book 628 at page 87."
Do you have a report?
The Warrant Committee recommends passage. This is probably the least controversial article on the list tonight. We have a gap in a boundary line on a map that doesn't completely close the boundaries around a piece of property. This article connects the dot.
Okay, it doesn't appear in the report, but this article does require a two-thirds vote. Are there any questions and comments? If there are none, then we'll put it to a vote. We do have a comment.
Hi, I'm Erin Stevens. I live on Harding Street. I hadn't seen this, and I was wondering if you could give a little bit more specific location of where this boundary is, perhaps maybe the closest crossroad?
It's the so-called Amnott property. There's a stone wall boundary, and at the time that the field work was done by the surveyors, there was a mark out of, a stone bound out of place, and it's through the line off. It's, we're talking a matter of a very small number of square feet.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, good. Okay, if there are no further questions or comments regarding Article 42, we'd put it to a vote. It requires two-thirds for passage. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it passes unanimously. Next article is Article number 29. Article 29 is an article to appropriate a sum of money to provide funding for the Medfield Cultural Council. Can be found on page 56 of the report. The article was sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, and Warrant Committee person Barbara Gibbs has a motion.
Thank you. Do the town appropriate $4,250, said sum to be raised on the fiscal year '15 tax levy to provide funding to the Medfield Cultural Council to enable to expend funds for public purposes, including to, but not limiting, to organizing, presenting, sponsoring, and supporting artistic and cultural exhibitions, performances, and events, and to authorize the Medfield Cultural Council to contract with individuals and organizations for any of said purposes, and to create a new town account with a separate line item in the town's annual operating budget. This is also supported by the Selectmen, and I just want to give you an idea of some of the things that the committee has been doing in the past couple of years. They've done jazz performances, Shakespeare in Medfield, several concerts, lectures, programs in the school, a marimba band in the school, and helped with the civil, with the Civil War program. So this $4,200 will help bring additional cultural activities to the Medfield. The Warrant Committee recommends passage of this article.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Jean Minio, Chairman of the Medfield Cultural Council. Other council members include Ron Gustafson, Bill Pope, Susan Parker, Isabel Wood, Diane Borelli, Claire Shaw, and Steve Kadenisi. We wanted to thank the Selectmen for their unanimous support last fall, and to the Warrant Committee for your support. Just a minute of background, the Mass Cultural Council provides funding for local cultural councils in every community in Massachusetts, and Medfield, like many other towns, gets the minimum amount allowable. That's determined by a formula applied to every town based on population, median income, and other factors. These funds are held in the town account. They're monitored by town personnel, and they're provided as reimbursements to applicants only after they've met established criteria. The Medfield Cultural Council is run by volunteers appointed by the Selectmen, so that all of our funding from the state goes to support programs in the arts, humanities, and interpretive sciences. We fund only programs that happen in Medfield for the benefit of our residents and to attract visitors. We know there's a positive return when you invest in culture, because unlike most industries, cultural programs leverage a significant amount of event-related spending by their audiences. For example, when you attend a play or a concert, you might buy dinner nearby or pay a babysitter. This spending generates dependable, sustainable commerce for local businesses. The Mass Cultural Council funds are the only state monies flowing to Medfield for cultural programs, and we're only able to support about 25% of the requests that we've been receiving over the past several years. It's a highly competitive program, and there are significant unmet needs, excuse me. And especially when you consider that about two-thirds of Medfield's cultural organizations are run by volunteers, this support is critical, and it funds the programs, not the staff. This request for $4,250 comes out to about .35 a person, and it will allow us to double our support for more programs in town, like the Medfield Farmers Market, Derby House, concerts in the schools and elsewhere in town, Vine Lake Cemetery, Woodland Theater, Zulo Gallery, gazebo players, jazz nights, et cetera. And we're asking residents to invest their .35 in culture in Medfield and vote in favor of Article 29. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pope?
Hi, Bill Pope, Fort Crane Place. I'm currently a member of the Cultural Council, but I first joined the Council back in 1983 when Susan Parker was the chairperson. She was the first chairperson of the Cultural Council. And I remember talking to her at the time that we wanted to find ways to bring more art and culture into the town. Finally, around 1988, the Council, which was comprised of Susan, Parker, Tim Ryan, Martha Moon, Frank Iafola, Jeff Masters, Marie Nolan, and some other people, were finally able to create the Zulo Gallery. Over the past 26 years, the gallery has evolved into the Zulo Gallery Center for the Arts. We put on six art exhibitions a year, featuring emerging and established professional artists from the greater Boston, New England area. We put on live music performances. We have art classes. We are something of a community gathering spot for many organizations in town. And just recently, yesterday as a matter of fact, we concluded the 19th Annual Medfield Public Schools Student-Faculty Art Exhibition, which showcases outstanding student work in grades K through 12 in the art faculty in the area of the visual arts. Now, the Zulo Gallery couldn't have survived these 26 years without a lot of community support. We've had a lot of hard-working volunteers, generous donors. The Medfield Selectmen have been extremely supportive over the years, as has Town Administrator Mike Sullivan, and many of the boards in town have been very helpful and supportive of us. Now, the reason I bring up the gallery is simply to illustrate the fact that the Arts Council, which started the gallery and has worked so hard to keep it going, is a very capable, dedicated group of individuals. We're very fortunate at this time to have Jean Minio as our Cultural Council Chairperson. She has a tremendous amount of experience and expertise in the area of arts administration, and I feel confident that if the Council is given this money, that it will do an outstanding job of funding and creating cultural activities for all members of the town, and so I would urge you to vote for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, we'll put the article to a vote. The article to appropriate a sum of money to provide funding for the Medfield Cultural Council. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it carries unanimously. And thank you to the Medfield Cultural Council. Our next article is Article 21. Article 21 is an article to accept Mass General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20, authorizing the establishment of a, of another post-employment benefits liability trust fund. We're going to link this one with Article 20 and do them together since they relate to a reference similar subject matter. So this is linked with Article 20. This requires, Article 21 requires only a simple majority. Article 20 will require a two-thirds vote. Mr. O'Shaughnessy, do you have a motion on Article number 21?
I do. Move that the town accept Mass General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20. This article will authorize the establishment of a special trust vehicle to hold funds dedicated to the payment of post-employment benefits for the town's employees. By holding the funds in this trust account instead of in the existing stabilization fund, the town will realize two advantages. One, in the method of actuarial calculations applicable to its liability, and the other in the quality of its bond rating, which can make future borrowing more economical for the taxpayers. The Warrant Committee recommends passage of Article 21.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on Article 21? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. It requires only a simple majority. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it passes unanimously. Article 20. Article 20 is an article to transfer funds from fiscal year 14 county retirement budget to the unfunded retiree health insurance stabilization fund, and to appropriate and/or to transfer from free cash a sum of money to the unfunded retiree health insurance stabilization fund. This article can be found on page 51 of the warrant report. It is an article... It is an article that is sponsored by the town administrator. It's an article that requires a two-thirds vote for passage, and Mr. O'Shaughnessy has a motion.
Article Twenty. Move that the town appropriate the sum of four hundred thousand dollars to the unfunded retiree health insurance stabilization fund, established under Article Twenty-six of the two thousand and six annual town meeting, and to meet said sum, raise one hundred thousand on the FY fifteen tax levy, transfer thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars from the FY fourteen county retirement contribution budget, account number zero-one-nine-one-one-dash-two, and transfer two hundred sixty-six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars from free cash for the purpose of setting aside monies to cover unfunded retiree health insurance costs in accordance with provisions of General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five B, as amended by Chapter Forty-six of the Acts of two thousand and three. Medfield's employees participate in a retirement plan that includes health insurance benefits. The town contributes to funding this plan through a stabilization fund, and now under Article Twenty, under the special trust. A few years ago, because of a change to the accounting rules for these plans, the town recognized an actuarial deficit against the benefits contractually owed to planned participants. For the past six years, Medfield has made contributions to meet the fund's anticipated obligations. This article proposes to continue our practice of making progress towards the reduction of this liability, and the warrant committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions or comments on Article Twenty, on the motion on Article Twenty? Okay, if there are none, we're going to put it to a vote. Requires two-thirds for passage. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, nay. Declare it passes unanimously. Next article is Article number twenty-six. Article number twenty-six is an article to appropriate sums of money from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds for the purpose of conducting an infiltration slash inflow, I-I study in inspecting, repairing, and upgrading the sewer infrastructure. The article can be found on page fifty-five of the report. It's offered by the Water and Sewer Commissioners, and Mr. Marie has a motion.
Move that the town appropriate one hundred and fifty-one thousand from the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the purposes of conducting an infiltration inflow study, and for inspecting, repairing, and upgrading the sewer infrastructure. In previous years, the capital budgets, and capital projects to maintain our water and sewer systems were budgeted in either the water or sewer department operating budgets, or in the capital budget. So, to improve the budgeting and rate-setting process, the Water and Sewer Commissioners are requesting that such capital expenditures be appropriated in separate warrant articles. Aside from the water tower bond issue, there are no other water capital projects proposed for fiscal year fifteen. And of the one hundred and fifty-one thousand, roughly fifty thousand is for the infiltration and inflow study, and the remaining hundred thousand for various other projects. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Questions or comments on Article twenty-six? Article twenty-six requires just a simple majority. If there are no questions or comments, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Declare it passes unanimously. Article forty-one is an article to accept a gift of a parcel of land between existing street and layout in the vicinity of one hundred Pine Street. Article can be found on page seventy-three of the report. The article is offered by the Board of Selectmen, and Warrant Committee Person Martha Fester has a motion.
Move to accept a gift of land as set out in the warrant. When the layout for Pine Street was engineered, it was designed to eliminate a curve just before Hawthorne Road. The land takings for the street layout were acquired by the town, but the new road design was never built. This left a small sliver of land, point one-four acres, between the actual road and the street layout. The assessors have to place a value on the land and mail out four quarterly tax bills totaling twenty dollars and ninety-six cents for FY nineteen fourteen. The cost of doing this is greater than the revenue. The owners of this strip have agreed to donate it to the town, which will eliminate it as a separate parcel and combine it with the Pine Street layout, and I venture this is actually the most non-controversial. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Okay, this requires, again, only a simple majority. Are there any questions or comments regarding the motion on Article number forty-one? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Declare that it passes unanimously. What we're giving up for excitement, we're making up in volume tonight here. And so, here we go. Article number forty. Article forty is an article to authorize the application and appropriate matching funds for public library construction program grant. It's found on page seventy-two of the warrant report. It was offered by the trustees of the Memorial Public Library, and Warrant Committee Person Barbara Gibbs has a motion.
Yes, this warrant has been changed since it was first submitted. Revised warrant of Article forty is to move that the town authorize the trustees of the Memorial Public Library to apply for, accept, and expend any state grants which may be available for feasibility study for the current and future needs of the Memorial Public Library. The warrant committee recommends passage of this article.
Steve Pelosi, Twenty Countryway, I'm a library trustee. Our library director, Deborah Kelsey, has applied for a state grant for monies that may be available for a feasibility study to evaluate the current and future design needs of the public library, things like space utilization, interior design, lighting, et cetera. Since the library was renovated and expanded fifteen years ago, library usage has changed. A lot, a lot more delivery via digital means, things like that. The actual design for the current library is about twenty years old. We're trying to proactively look forward in five or ten years in what the needs of the library will be at that time. The state, originally the article asked for a twenty-five thousand dollar appropriation. The state is matching that two-for-one. We'd get fifty thousand dollars to match that twenty-five thousand dollar appropriation. We're not sure the state is going to include that in next year's budget, so we're not asking the town to set aside twenty-five thousand dollars at this time. But, the understanding is that if we don't have this article in the warrant stating that the town will consider this in the future, the state will not review the grant for approval. So, we can't apply for the fifty thousand dollar grant unless we tell the state effectively that we'll consider it.
Okay, well, thank you. Other questions and comments?
Jim Whalen, Two-Sixty South Street, library trustee. We are running a long-range planning strategies for the library right now, and there were surveys passed out at the beginning. There's also online at the website, so we are nearing five hundred responses, and please fill it out. Thank you.
Okay, so please go online and fill out the trustee's survey. Okay, we're going to put the motion on Article forty to a vote. It requires only a simple majority. It's a motion to authorize application for the matching funds. Please, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Declare it passes unanimously. Article twenty-eight is an article to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease Lot Three, a parcel of the town-owned land off Ice House Road, for private industrial and/or commercial development. The article can be found on page fifty-six of the report. It is an article that is offered as a citizen position, petition, and Warrant Committee Person Nick Athanasidis has a motion.
Move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter to ground lease into private developers for the whole or any portion thereof of a parcel of land of Ice Road House, shown on the Board of Assessors maps of Map Fifty-Six, Lot Forty-Four, for the period not to exceed ninety-nine years on such terms or conditions as the Board of Selectmen deem to be in the best interest of the town of Medfield, and if deemed necessary or desirable to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Massachusetts General Court to enact special legislation authorizing the town of Medfield to enter into such leases.
Do you have a report?
The warrant committee recommends passage of this article.
Okay, Article twenty-eight requires a two-thirds vote for passage. Are there any questions and comments regarding Article twenty-eight?
Ruth Chip, Five Arnold Drive. I just wonder if this property needs to be used in the future for the center at Medfield, perhaps, if they have to do any further building, enlarge it, or perhaps for any senior housing that may not go through at the state hospital.
So, questions, have any consideration for the expansion of the center in Medfield to this parcel, or for the building of any senior housing on that particular lot?
There's just, just two areas. One, there's the so-called Hinkley property that also abuts that, that is available as well, that's there, and of course, we have the state hospital property down the road that, I know this Board of Selectmen is looking at over fifty-five housing be a priority up there, so between those two areas, I think there is area for expansion of, of housing for, for senior citizens. The Selectmen voted two to zero with one abstention to support this, and the main reason was the revenue. We're going to be able to bring in lease revenue and tax revenue into the town. The difference between this article and what happened last year, which was very similar, is that the Park and Recreation Commission is no longer looking to put fields in there. I think now with the town having purchased the state hospital property, the Park and Recreation Commission is more looking at the new land that the town will have, and that opens up this area. It's been there for a long time. We have a proposal. There may be other proposals, but the proposal that Mr. Borelli has, it's one to bring a first-class sports facility to town. It will bring revenue that I mentioned, it will bring jobs into the town. It will also bring additional visitors into the town that will stop hopefully at the restaurants, now that we got the extra tax on them, and we'll be able to spend money here as well. So, the Board of Selectmen urges you to support this.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Derek Emsky, One Seventy-Eight Pine Street. I'm speaking in support of Article twenty-eight. Medfield purchased a land off Ice House Road specifically for further economic activity and tax revenue to the town of Medfield. We're talking about spending. I think tax revenue is important as well. Since the purchase of the land in nineteen ninety-five, we built a world-class senior center and a very attractive Kingsbury Club in that area. Lot remaining, number three, remains vacant. So, if we look at lot remaining, three being vacant, and the purpose of the land is to create tax revenue, a vacant lot is not creating tax revenue, pretty simple. So, I've got sixteen quick points, no, really, three quick points, why this makes sense. Mr. DeSorja went over this briefly. Tax revenue. The current Kingsbury Club house brings in about fifty thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. This proposed facility would bring in around fifty thousand dollars a year as well in tax revenue. I would create thirty to forty full and part-time jobs for Medfield residents and residents of surrounding communities. There'd be no cost to families in the town of Medfield. It'll be bought by Mr. Borelli, and in the, in the state of Massachusetts, believe it or not, it's pretty interesting, I found out, our state real attacks, state taxes are a hundred and thirty-two out of three hundred and thirty-five towns and cities. So, more revenue hopefully will take that number down. The next point is the economic trickle-down effect that this will have on other businesses and establishments in the town of Massachusetts. Every single evening, hundreds of parents leave the town of Medfield to a Norfolk and other facilities, and we're talking about green, all the SUVs that are spending money on gas and everything else, including the area. So, we thought this is a good facility to have. They're spending money outside this town and surrounding communities. We thought the businesses in this area, the restaurants, the coffee shops, would really appreciate that money being spent in Medfield. The proximity of the location is extremely convenient to surrounding towns, not too far from Walpole, Wellesley, Needham, Natick, surrounding area, and the facility has little overlap, if you take a look at the proposed facility. There's four turf courts that are going to be built, one that will be boarded. There's going to be four basketball courts, and then there's going to be basically a vending area. Finally, is the children, the children, what is going to be into our children's community. I think, as a resident of Medfield, I find it's a very attractive part of this community. When you talk to other people about the community of Medfield, they talk about the town, you know, spirit, the town pride, they talk about the excellent education, and they talk about the striving for excellence in athletics. We have twenty state championships in this small town. We're not a large town. I think we should build on that number and make it a much bigger number. This has been a great year to really validate the point of why this facility is very important. I think you can all agree that it was a pretty long winter. I don't think it's over yet. This facility would not be subject to temperature changes, or daylight changes, or things like that, and the maintenance is basically maintenance-free if you take a look at it. And it would provide a safe and comfortable environment for our children to socialize and get physical activity. So, that's my three points. I think if you take a look at the tax revenue this will generate for us, the incremental sprinkle-down effect that our businesses will feel from that, whether it's the hardware stores, or the dry cleaners, or the coffee shops, the restaurants, and finally, our children, let's do it for our children as well. So, I ask for your support in Article number twenty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murby.
I'd just like to clarify what this article is about, and this is with no implications for the last speaker, or any comments on the current public, public proposal by Mr. Borelli. This is an article that authorizes the Selectmen to issue a lease. It's incumbent upon the Selectmen to make a wise choice about how they use that land. It certainly, there's one proposal that's out there on the table that there's logic to, and I don't mean to prejudice or suggest anything against it, but what you're voting on tonight is whether or not to authorize the Selectmen to issue a ninety-nine-year lease for commercial development of property. You're not voting on a particular project.
Okay, good point. Microphone number one, Mr. Casey.
Pat Casey, Twenty-Nine South Street, Chairman of the Economic Development Committee. Just a couple of things to build on the good points that have been made thus far. First off, the Economic Development Committee voted unanimously to support this measure for some of the reasons stated, for getting, you know, getting tax and lease revenue, and it's an attractive use of the, of the property, and it complements the other properties on Ice House Road. With regard to the general, if you will, nature of this proposal, what the Economic Development Committee will do if we pass this tonight is to issue an RFP, and to that, anybody can respond. Incidentally, this process is going to be very similar to what we did with the Kingsbury Club a few years ago. So, we expect Mr. Borelli to be a strong respondent, but there may be others, and we will be, you know, judging them on their merits, and then making a recommendation to the Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Hi, I'm Debbie Barrow, and I live on Copperwood Road, and just so it's absolutely clear, Copperwood Road abuts this parcel of land. I'm also on the Conservation Commission, and I'm going to speak to some conservation issues, but I am not representing the Conservation Commission, and if this were ever to come before the Conservation Commission for any purpose, I would not participate in those deliberations. But I would like to just make a couple of comments, because it does affect my neighborhood, and I think Medfield State Hospital also affects my neighborhood. I see this as, these lands is all linked. But first of all, I think people are very persuaded by the idea of the fifty thousand dollars of revenue, and I would ask you to consider that whether it's this project or any other project that is coming to this lot, when you're looking at revenue, ask yourself the question, and with, particularly with respect to this project, you know, do you need all these fields to generate this revenue? Do you need this size of complex? Because if you do, then you need to go out and look at that site and see that this size complex will not fit on that site, even including land from the Kingsbury Club, unless you start impacting riverfront area and wetlands areas on the site. It will generate, it, it looks like it has about three hundred spaces for parking. You're looking at in-and-out parking on an hourly basis of hundreds of cars, which is going to add to the traffic impact that you're going to have on West Street and Twenty-Seventh. We've got ninety units of housing going in at Park Street. So, any project that goes here, but in particular, this project, people really need to look at it really carefully. And so, when you're, you're undertaking this consideration about whether leasing this land at this point in time is a good thing, and when an RFP is going out, and the RFP as it goes out will dictate the projects that come back to you. I'm going to ask you to take a hard look at the question of, we just spent a lot of money to purchase Medfield State Hospital. You have the hospital, it's linked to the sledding hill, which links to the ball fields at McCarthy Park, and the softball fields, which links to this parcel of land, which right now is open space, and can be part of any design plan or project that comes with the state hospital. I think it makes sense to be prudent, to think about more of a master plan and not run for a proposed alleged, maybe not possible, fifty thousand dollars of tax revenue, you know, coming after an RFP in the next few weeks. Thank you. Thank you.
John Nealon, also Copperwood Road, so also close by. I had a comment, but also two questions first. One, a clarification of Mr. Gamski's comments. Is he still there? Was he suggesting that all of the activities that Medfield children do is going to be free of charge? Is that correct?
No.
Okay. I thought I heard that, that it was going to be, yeah. Is that what it sounded like? Yeah, I thought so. Yeah. So I think it's very clear that there's a very slick PR campaign, I'll call it, or in my mind, that's what it was, that laid out all the positives on this, not many of the negatives. This is not a town facility, this is a for-profit facility. Majority of the users are going to be coming from out of town, not from Medfield. The 26 teams of soccer, the 12 basketball teams, and the 110 lacrosse players will only fill a fraction of a day of that, of a weekly programming at that location. That means that the other 90 or 95% are going to be coming out of town. And it's not just West Street, as Deb Barrow pointed out. It's also going to be 27 and 109, 109 and North Street, where peak time for this activity happens to coincide with when the traffic is worst in town. This facility needs to be much, much smaller than proposed. It's 40-something percent bigger than Fort Kicks, where we see each other every week. We're all going down there. It probably should be 40% smaller, and I'd be in favor of it at that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Just in, just a reaffirmation of Mr. Murby's point that the motion on the floor is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease this lot as opposed to the specific proposal. Microphone number one.
Erin Stevens, Harding Street. I was wondering what kind of consideration has been made, again, to his point about the traffic coming in and out. The stretch of Harding Street and West Mill Street, that area right there is, it's actually become very dangerous. People come flying down at like highway speeds. And with the increased activity and development that's going to happen on Hospital Road, and then with this potential Ice House Road, I'm just wondering what kind of consideration and weight is being put into the RFP? Are we going to have 300, is it going to be an influx of potentially 300 cars an hour on a regular basis? And how is that going to be addressed and, or considered at all?
I'm going to ask Mr. Casey to respond to that.
Good question. I was trying to be brief earlier, evidently at the expense of completeness. So just using the Kingsbury Club as an analogy, we had a number of selection criteria, and they were impact on the neighbors, they were traffic, they were willingness to cooperate with the school programs and with Park and Rec. So all of those things would be part of the consideration set this time around. Also, we, we have public meetings, so if you're concerned about the selection criteria or understanding who's, who's responded, we'll, you know, we'll publish our calendar, and you can come along and influence it.
Mr. Sorrell.
Any project, any proposed project of this type would require a special permit from the planning board, so that would be part of the process as well.
Any potential opportunity to have a direct entrance made to Route 27 from this property?
No, there's a railroad track in between that you wouldn't be able, it's an active CSX rail line.
In other areas of town, I do drive over that track, so is there an opportunity to go that way? And perhaps I should just go to that other meeting the gentleman mentioned. Would that be an appropriate place to discuss it?
I think the best, the most direct route is already is there, down West Mill Street, out to West Street, out to 27, so.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only one I could think of, yeah.
Okay, final two comments or questions from microphone number one and number two.
Yeah, Ann Thompson, 146 North Street. I very strongly support that the Selectmen's going out for an RFP for this project, for any project. It's very, very rare we have a chance to make some money with property in Medfield. Almost all our uses are residential, as you know. Roughly 96 through 66, excuse me, 96% of Medfield properties are residential. This is a rare, rare opportunity. We've been spending money all night, we still have the budgets, we've got more money to spend. This is a rare opportunity to increase our revenue, not increase our expenses.
Well, thank you. Mr. Peterson, final comment.
Posler Peterson, Copperwood Road. I'm speaking down here because I'm on a butter to this, so I cannot speak as a Selectman on this. I'm speaking as an individual. I think the first thing the Selectmen need to do, or the town needs to do with this, is to have a master plan as to what it is going to do with each individual parcel that it owns. We shouldn't be peeling off individual parcels of land and doing individual projects with them. We need to have an overall plan for all of the town land, and so that first should come the master plan. Secondly, I think that I've come to feel that the, the business of Medfield is, is housing, and that we can actually make money out of housing. Ralph Costello's project, Old Medfield Square, has proven that. When that is fully built, it'll be turning in $600,000 a year to the town and, and costing the town maybe $50,000 a year. So $550,000 of profit for the town from housing per year. That's on seven acres of land. This parcel of land is 14 acres, and it's slated to return $50,000 to the town. If Mr. Costello was to build up there, the town would be getting a million dollars a year from, from the housing up there. I think the, I think that something should happen with this land, but I think the town should be very careful as to what they do with it. The proposal for the sports complex is huge. It's, it's 50% bigger than Fort Kicks, and anybody that's been down to Fort Kicks has seen the in-and-out traffic there. This has a 300-lot parking lot, so there are going to be 300 cars coming in every hour, 300 cars going out, 600 car trips through those neighborhoods. It's a huge impact for $50,000 a year in cost, or profit to the town, and the town can make more profit from putting other uses there. Thank you.
Okay, Article 28. Everybody comfortable? Okay, we're going to put it to a vote. It requires a two-thirds vote for passage. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Can I get a show of hands? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Then declare it passes by the two-thirds required. Article 19 is an article to appropriate sewer beddements paid in advance to the sewer stabilization fund, can be found on page 41, excuse me, 51 of the report. It's offered by the town accountant, and Mr. Marie has a motion.
Move that the town transfer $207,155 from sewer beddements paid in advance to the sewer stabilization fund, established under Article 31 of the 2004 Annual Town Meeting in accordance with the provisions of General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5B, as amended by Chapter 46 of the Acts of 2003. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
This requires a two-thirds vote. Are there any questions and comments regarding this Article 19? If there's not, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it passes unanimously. Article 23 is an article to appropriate funds determined financing and to authorize and/or to authorize borrowing for preparation of design and construction documents for a public safety building. The article can be found on page 53 of the warrant report. The article was offered by the Permanent Planning and Building Committee, and Mr. Sullivan has a motion.
Move that the town appropriate $850,000, and to meet said sum, $50,000 be raised on the FY15 tax levy, $450,000 be transferred from free cash, and $350,000 be transferred from the stabilization fund for the purpose of preparing construction plans and documents, and such other reports or tests as may be needed for a public safety building. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Microphone number one.
Yes. My name is John Dunner, and I'm the co-chair of the Permanent Building Committee, and I'm hoping I could just give an update as to this project and the DPW project.
Yes, yeah, please, John, sure.
Okay. Before I start, though, I'd like to, like the other building committee members just to stand up and be identified. Tim Bonfati, Tom Urb, Lou Fellini, and my co-chair, Mike Quinlan. Don't know where the rest are. As a committee, we felt it was important to provide an update on the progress of the proposed new facility, which is noted in the handout you received when you came in and ties directly to the article we're considering right now. I'm going to hear four basic topics, broad context, where we are now, why we need this, and what we're proposing. And as there's a few more articles go tonight, I will be brief. Broad context. In 2008, the town adopted the findings and recommendations of the Medfield Capital Planning and Finance Committee. The report developed a list of projects in order of priority, and that priority order was DPW, the Police Fire Department, and the Park and Rec Facility. And subsequent to the issuance of that report, the Dale Street School was added into the mix. The report noted that in all cases, the current existing facilities were either outdated, overcapacity, or in such general disrepair that new facilities would need to be built in the relative near term, and that there had been no meaningful renovation in the last 30 to 40 years since those original facilities were built. It noted that given the competition in the construction markets, meaning bid prices were low due to lots of competition, plus interest rate stability, meaning rates were low, so money was cheap to borrow, plus the town debt position, meaning the town debt was declining, that all equaled the proper timing for a capital campaign of, or a cap, a campaign of capital construction. Some recommendations of the report were that a single building committee should be appointed to efficiently oversee the project, which was done, and that given the current pace of building inflation, any project should be voted in a three-step process, first being the feasibility study, then the design fees, then the total project cost. And that by doing this, it will allow the most accurate cost estimates possible based on complete designs, and limit the possibility of budget overruns requiring additional appropriations. This is the process we used on the DPW project and we're planning to use on the Police Fire Facility. That was a snapshot of where we are, so, or where we started, so where are we now? At last year's town meeting, Article 27 and 28 were approved. Article 27 was to approve construction funds for the new DPW facility, and Article 28 approved $500,000 towards the design of a new public safety facility. With regard to the DPW project, as of today, the project is on time and under budget. Project is 66% complete, and of the 1.1 million budgeted for contingency, approximately 800,000 remains. With regard to that 800,000, in order to help defray costs associated with a new public safety facility, it's the committee's intention to work with the town administration to apply any and all remaining contingency funds towards the public safety project. With regard to the public safety facility, with a successful vote last spring, the PBC began working on the project last summer, and since that time has met roughly every two weeks. Our initial efforts were centered on whether we should phase the project, thereby only disrupting one department at a time, or relocating both the police and fire to different locations and then building the project in one phase. What we found was that by not phasing the project, meaning we'll send both departments elsewhere during construction, there would be significant cost savings. So with that, we decided to temporarily relocate the fire department to the new DPW garage, which is scheduled to be completed in July, and the police to the temporary, to new temporary quarters to be located off the Ice House Road cul-de-sac near the Kingsbury Club. Today, we're approximately 40% complete with the design development documents. This means that our architect and their consultants have developed plans, sections, elevations, typical construction details and diagrammatic layouts of building systems to fix and describe the size and character of the project, along with an outline specification that identifies major materials and systems and establishes in general their quality level. Why do we need this? As is described in your hand, handout, Medfield is a very different town than when the original fire station was built in 1962, and from when the police were moved into the addition to that station in 1977. From 1961 to now, our population has increased nearly 40%. Additionally, and this is very important, in 1961, Medfield's fire department was comprised of 30 on-call firemen. Today, there are nine full-time employees and 18 on-call firemen. This move from on-call to fire, to full-time status is a significant and continuing trend, not only throughout the state, but nationally as well. Another significant change is the amount and the nature of the calls. In 1972, sorry, in 1962, the medical calls were handled by the police department, and there was 93 of them. Today, all the medical calls are handled by the fire department, and there were 608 of them. In 1962, there were 130 fire calls. Today, there was 527. And in 1962, the fire department's budget was $12,700, and today it's $938,000. For the police, the change is less stark than the fire, but no less significant. Since 1977, there's been a 20% increase in population. In 1977, there were 14 full-time employees and 15 part-time employees. Today, there's 19 full-time employees and 10 part-time employees. In 1972, 1977, there were 62 miles of roadway patrolled by the policemen. Today, there's 75. In 1977, there was 4,100 calls for service. Today, there's 5,062. And in 1977, there was, the police budget was 540,000, whereas today it's 2.4 million. Now, with these statistics in mind, it needs to be said that the primary problem with the current station is that due to the explosion of both state and federal regulations, the current facility has become outdated, unsafe, and undersized. In summary, what all these police and fire statistics show is that Medfield has moved from the largely rural community it once was to the firmly established suburban community we are today, and that the current facilities have the effect of inhibiting the delivery of the type of emergency services we would expect from these two different types of public safety departments in 2014. So here's what we're proposing. As mentioned earlier, in 2013, last year, we appropriated $500,000 to commence design on the public safety facility. The article in this year's town meeting warrant is requesting an additional $850,000 to complete the design work and the bidding of the project. Also included in that $850,000 is the planning related to the temporary, temporary relocations of the two departments and the bidding for the temporary police structure on Ice House Road. Working on a parallel track with the Warrant Committee and the Board of Selectmen, it's our intention that once bids are in hand, that we would request a special town meeting in early winter to appropriate the final funding for the project. At that point, we would have firm bid pricing and an exact amount for a request for appropriation and bond authorization. With that, I'd like to thank everyone for their time and patience. Like to remind everyone that the building committee meetings are open to the public and that we typically meet at Town Hall on the first and third Wednesday of every month. So if you have any thoughts, questions, or concerns, we're always available. And finally, please view our website at medfieldpbc.org, which is listed on your handout for the latest plans, budgets, and schedules. Mr. Moderator, I thank you for your time and turn it back.
Okay, well, thank you, John, and thanks to the Permanent Planning and Building Committee. We are going to vote now on a motion that was offered by Mr. Sullivan, a motion regarding the appropriation of funds determining financing and the authorization of borrowing for the preparation of design and construction documents for the public safety building. It does require a two-thirds vote for passage, so I'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, declare it passes unanimously. Article 17. Article 17 is our operating budget. Article 17, the operating budget begins on page 38 in the warrant report. The operating budget is sponsored by our Board of Selectmen. The motion is that we're going to move that the town appropriate a sum of money, which we will get to, to defray the operating expenses in the various town boards, committees, commissions, and departments, as printed in the warrant report and/or as amended by this town meeting for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2014, and that to meet said appropriations, these sums of money that we vote on will be raised and appropriated on the fiscal 2015 tax levy or transferred from accounts or funds as follows. We're going to follow our normal procedure. I'm going to read the line items. If you want to put a hold on them, please call out loudly, "A hold." We'll go quickly through these line items, then we will vote on the, on all those items that are not held, then we will vote on those and have separate discussion on those items that are held. Then we will vote on the entire budget. The entire budget does require a two-thirds vote. So I begin. Workers' compensation insurance, health and life insurance, liability insurance, unemployment compensation, Medicare insurance, county retirement contribution, Selectmen salaries, Selectmen operations, Town Administrator salaries, Town Administrator operations, Warrant Committee operations, Town Accountant salaries, Town Accountant operations, Assessor salaries, Assessor operations, Treasurer Collector salaries, Treasurer Collector operations, Town Council operations, Human Resource salaries, Human Resource operations, Information Technology salaries, Information Technology operations, Town Clerk and Election Registrar salaries, Town Clerk and Election Registrar operations, Conservation Commission salaries, Conservation Commission operations, Planning salaries, Planning operations, Zoning and Appeals operations, Town Hall salaries, Town Hall operations, Town Report Meeting operations, Police Administration operations, Police Operations salary, Police Operations operations, Traffic Market signs operations, School Traffic salaries. traffic market signs operations, school traffic salaries, school traffic operations, fire and rescue administration salaries, fire and rescue administration operations, fire and rescue operations salary, fire and rescue operations operations, inspection salaries, inspection operations, sealer salaries, sealer operations, MEMA operations, animal control salaries, animal control operations, tree care salaries, tree care operations, highway salaries, highway operations, snow and ice salaries, snow and ice operations, street lighting operations, town garage operations, equipment repair and maintenance salaries, equipment repair and maintenance operations, sidewalk operations, public works utilities operations, solid waste disposal salaries, solid waste disposal operations, cemetery salaries, cemetery operations, health operations, public health nurse operations, mental health nurse operations, council on aging personnel, council on aging operations, veterans salaries, veterans operations, outreach salaries, outreach operations, library salaries, library operations, park and recreation salaries, park and recreation operations, historical commission operations, grave marker flags operations, Memorial Day, Veterans Day operations, stabilization, reserve fund, town debt principal, town debt interest, regional vocational school operations, school administration personnel, school administration operations, school instruction personnel, school instruction operations, other school personnel, other school operations, school maintenance personnel, school maintenance operations, school transportation operations, school fixed assets operations, school tuition, public and private operations. Finally, enterprise fund operations, water salaries, water operations, water reserve fund, sewer salary, sewer operations, and the sewer reserve fund. So hearing no holds, we will vote on the budget in its entirety as soon as we get that printed out. Okay, this will be the motion on the operating budget for the next fiscal year. Here's the motion.
We move that the town appropriate the sum of $53,491,540 to defray the operating expenses of the various town boards, committees, commissions, and departments as printed in the warrant report and/or as amended by this town meeting for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2014, and that to meet said appropriation, the following sum must be raised and appropriated on the fiscal 2015 tax levy or transferred from accounts or funds as followed. FY15 tax levy, $48,385,979. Bond premium on 4.2 million, bond issued, 6107, $4,888,4884. Bond anticipation note interest reimbursement, $68,825. Premium on sawmill Brook Bonds, $1,346. School building assistance multi-school projects, $1,208,535. Cemetery perpetual care interest account, $6,000. Pension reserve fund, $100,000. Free cash, $100,000. Overlay surplus, $98,570. Mass Water Pollution Abeyments Trust Title V Health Septic Loan Account, 30-304, $4,174. North and Green Street Water Main Replacement Article 23, 326, 2012 Annual Town Meeting, $568. Stabilization Fund for advanced payments of sewer betterments, $400,000. Water Enterprise Fund, $1,608,381. Sewer Enterprise Fund, $1,504,278.
Questions, comments, microphone number one.
Well, I should warrant Pound Street. I just wonder if we have enough people in the room now to vote.
I think we do.
Okay, I've been looking around. It kind of looks sparse to me.
We could call for a, for a count, but I think we do. Okay, here we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Requires two-thirds vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I declare it passes unanimously. Okay, next article is Article number 22. Article 22 is an article to authorize Conservation Commission to enter into a lease of Holmquist land for agricultural and/or other conservation-related uses, such as organic farming and/or organic cooperative farming. The article can be found on page 52 of the, of the warrant report. It was offered by the Conservation Commission, and warrant committee person Jim O'Shaughnessy is going to read a motion.
Move that the town authorize the Conservation Commission to enter into leases of portions of conservation land off Plain Street, known as Holmquist Farm Conservation Land, identified on the Board of Assessors' maps as Map 12, Lots 4, 5, 8, 9, and 14, for periods not to exceed 20 years, for agricultural and/or other conservation-related uses, including but not limited to organic farming and/or organic cooperative farming. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Thank you. Questions or comments? This does require a two-thirds vote.
Good evening. I'm Jeanette Hassipidis, 27 Plain Street. I don't know of how many of you have ever gone down Plain Street, but it's literally an old carriage path. Mr. Holmquist, the original Holmquist, he was one of the milkmen in Medfield. At times, it's very hard to even get two cars to pass on Plain Street, and when the farming, the gardens are active, there's no parking for even the, the current community gardens, and it's very hard to get through. I just wonder what type of traffic plans are in place for this, if there are... To get to the plots that you all are talking about, is there going to have to be a road cut into the conservation land? What considerations have been taken to accommodate all of this? And there's no sidewalks? Just curious as to what plans have been thought about.
So, good question. Selectmen, Administrator, Conservation Commission? If you want to respond to the question about parking and/or traffic as it relates to Plain Street and Article 22.
I think Plain Street, I live on Nebo, and that's narrow, and, you know, people manage to get by. I don't think it'd be any very intensive use down there for farming. You usually don't have a lot of traffic as a result of it, particularly if it's going to be a leased arrangement. You would have, whoever was leasing the land would probably have a couple of trucks going in a day or something, but I, I don't view it as you're going to have dozens of cars going down there. Certainly not in the, anymore, certainly nothing like you would have with the community gardens program that's currently in existence.
Well, I think that depends, because there's four or five, five lots under consideration, and if you're talking about more of a community garden environment for leasing, that's one thing, but it's very, very vague as to the leases that could be under consideration if it's more of a, a large corporate entity.
Well, the Conservation Commission will have to put a lease out on this, and, and you could certainly go to one of their meetings and discuss your concerns with them at the meeting. I, I don't see it. I, I think part of this is the change in conservation. It used to be they didn't regard agriculture as part of the conservation movement, but I think there's been a major shift with a grow food locally movement, that now growing food for consumption locally is considered a very important conservation use, and I think that's part of what's behind this. But I see a member of the Conservation Commission behind you. She could probably more adequately address it.
Debbie Barrow from Copperwood Road in Concom. And again, I'm not speaking for the entire Conservation Commission, but there's nothing that I know of in front of our commission right now for any proposal for farming, or any present idea of even putting out an RFP, which we would have to do if, to bring farming to that area. I think it's more an issue of, 10 years ago, we requested authority from the town to lease the land for a period of 10 years, so that the 4-H sheep farming program could have the sheep on the land, and we actually issued them a license to use it, but not a full lease. So they never had entire possession of the property. But that authority to lease or license the land, I believe, is ending this year, and that the purpose of the article really is to preserve the opportunity for the 4-H Sheep Club to continue to put their sheep on that property, and to allow us to, to lease or license it. But what we have done, as I said, is license it, which means that we don't give them ultimate control of the property. They have a right to use it, but the town always has the right to go in and out on the property, so they don't have exclusive use and control of the property. So that's my understanding of the primary importance of getting this authority, which is to keep the 4-H Sheep Club program on that property. And I don't know of any other proposed use at this point, or idea to even put out an RFP for farming.
Okay, thank you. So for Article 22, requires a two-thirds vote on the motion that Mr. O'Shaughnessy read. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it passes unanimously. I'd just like to recognize Jim O'Shaughnessy, because this is his, his last of his, his town meetings as a member of the warrant committee. He's served two full three-year terms as a member of the warrant committee, been to a lot of town meetings, spent a lot of Tuesday nights at town hall. Thank you. Article 25 is an article to appropriate the sum of $139,207, said some to be transferred from the Water Enterprise Fund unrestricted fund balance to the General Fund Stabilization Fund to reimburse the General Fund Stabilization Fund for monies appropriated under Article 2 of the October 2013 Special Town Meeting to pay for design of a water tower and an associated water main. This is offered by the Water and Sewer Commission. It can be found on page 54 of the report on the warrant, and Mr. Marie has a motion.
Move that the town appropriate $139,207, said some to be transferred from the Water Enterprise Fund unrestricted fund balance to the General Fund Stabilization Fund to reimburse the General Fund Stabilization Fund for monies appropriated under Article 2 of the October 2013 Special Town Meeting to pay for design of a water tower and associated water mains. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Questions or comments on Article 25? If there are none, we will put it to a vote. Article 25 does require a vote of two-thirds for passage. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it passes unanimously. So we're about to address our final motion on free cash. So we thank you all. First of all, please, if you could just stay for just a, two minutes while we wrap this up, I want to thank all of you for coming and for staying. I want to thank the members of the warrant committee. I want to thank Chris Allen. I want to thank the school department, the custodial staff for doing all this. I want to thank the Chamber String Orchestra that gave us, you know, a great concert at the beginning. Conrad Blitzer and the team of counters who we didn't need, and the folks from Public Safety, as well as the members of the warrant committee and the executive branch. So thank you. So we have a final motion. The final motion is Article number 45. And this is an article to authorize the use of free cash to reduce the tax rate, found in page 75 of the report on the warrant. It's offered each year by the Board of Assessors, and Mr. Marie, do you have a motion?
Move that the town will authorize the Board of Assessors to use $500,000 from free cash in the Treasury for the reduction of the tax rate for the fiscal year 2015. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Any questions or comments on Article 45? If there are none, we'll put it to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn? Excuse me. Yes. Yes, I know. Oh, excuse me, Mike.
Before you adjourn, did we deal with Article 39? I don't remember it, and I haven't got it marked off on my...
Yeah, Article 39 had been added to the consent calendar. It was one of the two articles on the consent calendar that we did vote to dismiss as part of that.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Also like to recognize Joanna Hilford, who is leaving the warrant committee, who's done an outstanding job for us over the last couple of years, and thank her for her service.
I move to adjourn.
Yes, exactly. Okay, so, I move that we dissolve the 2014 Medfield Annual Town Meeting. Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.